I have seven PM. We will call the regular county council meeting of June fifteenth to order. First things, a couple of rules for those of you who may not have been involved with a Zoom meeting. When I ask that you continually mute yourself. Background noises are very distracting, so unless you're speaking, I would prefer that you are on mute. I also have the ability to mute everyone. If I notice that there's some background noise coming in, I may mute you. But it would be best if you would control your own mute function. We're going to go slow as, as I, I have a lot of things to speak about. I see there's a Michael's iPad who wishes to speak on agenda item five and the tap grant, but I don't know who Michael is. So I need, I need a last name or some information there. That brings me to another point. When you are speaking, please identify yourself. We have multiple screens of video. And I'll need you to even Alders, please state your name. Just so the clerk who's making the record can, can keep track of that. If you are a public member speaking, state your name and address for the record. We need those so we can have a record of who spoke and then what they said. So before we go any further, I think we've got almost everyone muted. I'm going to quick hit the, let's see here. All right, so I'm, I'm taking numbers here. We've got a few people wishing to speak. I need to write those down. I still don't know who Michael's iPad is, so I need a, oh, Michael Mira. Okay, thank you very much, Michael. And I'm just writing down some other ones here. And we will limit the speaking time as we have a lengthy agenda and there's a lot of things to discuss. So you will be limited to your three minutes. And let's see, Mike, you wanted, hang on, oh geez, they're flying in. It's okay, we're going to keep this up. And Mike, why don't you speak on? All right, yeah, normally we will be filling out and I'll, we're gonna kind of forego a little bit of the formality that we would have in person. Allowing anyone to speak on the agenda items as they come up. I appreciate that people have pre-registered for some of this, but it's, it's difficult to make sure everyone pre-registered, so we're just going to go through and allow public comments on everything without pre-registering though. With that, give me a second, we're going to try our new virtual background. And I'm going to step aside and please join me in our salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. I appreciate that. We had, as most of you probably know, yesterday was Flag Day. The, the birth of our flag, so we wanted to show a little extra respect and honoring that. And with that, we will forego the mayor's opening remarks, although the last couple of weeks have certainly brought a lot for me to say. I think it's brought a lot for everyone to say and, and we're, we're getting through. Things are in turmoil, but we're, we're managing. And everybody is, is participating. When you're out, you need to be safe. Wear a mask if you're going to be coming within six feet of someone. There are the county, the county health department has issued some new guidelines in regards to what is close contact. I would urge you all to take a look at that. That should be available on the Porch County website.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry for the interruption, but we missed roll call.
I'm sorry. I apologize for that. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. Jennings?
Here.
Shore?
Here.
Nable? Zerazua?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Slawinski?
Here.
Niebone?
Here.
Leek?
Here.
Dalton?
Here.
Fishler?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
So did anyone hear from Alder Nable?
Yeah. I know it's President Johnson here. I know she was planning something with her family. But I thought she said she was going to be trying to, to dial in or.
Okay. Thank you, President Johnson. At this point, clerk, we'll need to mark her as absent because we didn't hear anything prior to this. All right, so we do have a quorum. We will continue. I'm monitoring the chat. I'm trying to get, get both screens on. There's, there's two screens of people connected. So I will, as I said, go slow. And at this point, we would open it up to persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item. Alex? You're muted now. Nope, you're not muted. I need you to mute yourself, Alex, please. Persons who wish to address the mayor and council on a specific agenda item other than a public hearing should register their request at this time. Those who wish to address the common council during a public hearing are not required to identify themselves until a public hearing is declared open by the mayor. I have currently on a non-agenda item Theresa McGraw and Mike Taylor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, give me just a second here. And you know, three months into this and it's still pretty awkward. All right, so let's start with Theresa McGraw. Theresa, unmute yourself and you would have three minutes. Name an address for the record first, please.
Theresa McGraw, address is one nine three Forest Street North in Stevens Point.
Okay, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Sorry, thanks for allowing me to speak. Mayor Mike, your mayor's minute this past week. You said you needed some time to understand all of the pieces involved in the incidents that happened on the square recently. I want you to know I needed several tries to get through your three minute and fifty-three second video because each sentence made me more angry than the last, not because of the incidents that happened on the square, but because of your words. You said there's no room in our community for hate, bigotry, racism, or intimidation. That's not who we are. Yet you, Mayor Mike, are a bigot. And I, since I can imagine you bristling at that label, I'm going to define it. A bigot is anyone who promotes, perpetuates, and/or protects the heterosexual capitalist patriarchal status quo in favor of the inclusion of diversity or difference of any kind. I could, you further went on to say that you have to assume some mayor at some point abused their power and that's why we have a police and fire commission now. Almost exactly five years ago, shortly after you were first elected mayor, there was an advertisement requesting applications from people interested in serving on the police and fire commission. I submitted my application and resume along with several others. I found out perhaps a few days before the city council meeting in which that new member was to be appointed, that another applicant had been nominated by you to present to the city council. I spoke to my alder and asked if she would question your decision at that meeting. She and several others did. You spoke about how the person you were not nominating was very experienced and how given the commission was going to be hiring a police chief very soon, you felt that you needed the most qualified and experienced person to be put on that commission. I had to assume that was the most qualified person. But being the good investigator that I am, I went to the city clerk's office and requested all the applications and resumes. There were maybe six to eight applications and resumes. A variety of administrative and community experience. There was even a former police officer with a master's degree in criminal justice, an extensive experience in creating personnel policies, hiring, and supervising a wide variety of positions and individuals. One applicant did not submit a resume, a resume, but only wrote one line in his application that said, "I want to continue my public service." That was the person you chose. And I hope I'm not making any improper assumptions, but he was a straight white man joining four other straight white men on the commission. And those five, unless I am mistaken again, still compose the commission today. And you wonder about the anger coming from the minority community. This is the good old boy system at its worst, or perhaps its best, depending on who you are. The police and fire commission was designed to gain community involvement and oversight of protective services. It was not designed as a place for retired officers from the department in question to influence and continue to maintain the status quo. If I can have about fifteen more seconds, I and I believe many others will join me in demanding that at least three of these current members of the commission resign immediately and a real and thorough search take place to put in members who better represent our entire community. And by the way, that applicant with the master's degree was the only applicant to would have brought any discernible diversity to the commission.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Mike Taylor.
Hi there. Thanks for having me, everybody. My name is Mike Taylor at six nine zero five Country Beautiful Lane in Stevens Point, Wisconsin. And I'm an unintended consequence of ordinance twelve point zero two three B as it relates to the farm market. I own and operate Uncle Mike's Maple Syrup at six nine zero five Country Beautiful Lane in Stevens Point, five four four eight two. And we offer a wide variety of maple products not found everywhere. We're a licensed producer of maple syrup with headquarters in Point and a farm in Burnhamwood, Wisconsin. We're a member of the Wisconsin Maple Syrup Producers Association where we've received a blue ribbon for our product three years in a row and have been at the Wisconsin State Fair representing Stevens Point for the last three years in a row. Our Bourbon Barrel Aged Maple Syrup was featured in USA Today last fall and in the Stevens Point Daily Journal and in the, all the other Wisconsin Gannett newspapers. So we bring a fair amount of good press to Stevens Point. Our products are featured throughout town and Wisconsin. For the last five weeks, with the exception in the last ten days, an exception has been made for me at the Stevens Point Summer Farmers Market. The exception was made for farms outside of the thirty mile radius that enhance the value of the market and, and that is at the discretion of the farm market manager. We've been at the Wisconsin or at the winter market for the last two years in the Town Hall behind Fleet Farm, and we've been at the Farm Shed Local Food Fair for the last three years representing Stevens Point. Our roots in Stevens Point run deep. My wife Janet has been teaching at Pachelli Catholic Schools for over thirty years. Our son is on the staff at Spash, and I'm a former clerk for the town of Stockton. Last year, we paid one thousand eighty-four dollars in Portage County taxes and one thousand five hundred and three dollars in Stevens Point school tax. Despite our contributions to the community, we were voted out, voted out of the Stevens Point Summer Farmers, Farmers Market on June sixth, usurping the authority of the farm market manager in the bylaws and in the aforementioned ordinance. The vote was eight to eight to keep us there. The motion failed with the tie. Minutes were provided in a packet that I've sent to the mayor, and you should all be getting that by email. Members of the association cited ordinance twelve two three B. They actually hid behind it because there was a way to keep us there, but no dialogue. I don't believe that the ordinance was intended to exclude me, being a member of the community that does, does all the things that we described and keeps our money in the community each week. Ten days ago, we sold nine hundred and twenty-five dollars worth of maple products that stayed in the community. Now, about that vote, surprisingly, twenty-five percent of the members get this. Twenty-five percent of the members on the market roster do not contribute to the Portage County tax role whatsoever. And furthermore, what they earn at the market does not stay at the market. I think that that was not done by design either. I'm asking you to recognize the contribution of businesses that are headquartered in Stevens Point and Portage County and add the words "or headquartered in Portage County" to ordinance twelve point zero two three B so that I may continue to sell my products at the oldest market in Wisconsin. I could get a peddler's license and still sell across from my, my cohorts in the, at the center of the square. But the peddler's license does not allow glass soda bottles. We offer a Bourbon Barrel Aged Maple Root Beer. That's a big hit. We sold two hundred and ninety-five dollars worth of that at the farm market ten days ago, and we would not be able to sell our glass soda on the square unless some type of variance was made. So I'm looking for someone to champion my ideas, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor's comments, I believe in some supporting documentation, were emailed out to the Alders late in the day today. They were also sent to our city department heads. If anyone from the public would like comments, please contact my office or the clerk's office tomorrow, and we can get those shared with you. Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's a sticky situation there with the farmers market in regards to what is and isn't allowed. Both the farmers market bylaws and the city councils ordinance relating to those would allow for exceptions that provide benefit to the market. But if anyone has questions in regards to that or would like to follow up with me further, please contact my office or you can contact Mr. Taylor. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? I'm not seeing any indications in the chat room or on the video. So I'm going to assume that there's nobody else wishing to speak on a non-agenda item. And then we will move on to our consent agenda, which begins on page five of your packet. Michael O'Meara, you wish to speak relating to the plan commission's item in regards to the Emerson Park Plan. Mr. O'Meara, you have the floor.
Thank you. I would hope.
Name an address, please.
Michael O'Meara, eighteen oh nine Clark Street, Stevens Point, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
I would hope that the council and the plan commission really approve this plan. It's been put together by a grassroots group of people who live in the neighborhood. They've been working on it. They've been raising money, and I think it's a worthy deal. In the Stevens Point Park Plan, for over ten years, they have referred to this neighborhood as needing a neighborhood park and not having it. In the last plan, it said we should develop Emerson Park. So I would like us to follow our park plan and in fact, continue with this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Meara. I didn't have anyone else registered, so we will now ask the council. I believe there's a couple of items that some of the members wish to pull. Alder Jennings, you had an item you wish to pull?
Yes, sir, from the Finance Committee, number six, adjusting licensing fees for twenty twenty due to the interruption of business operations, please.
Okay, and President Johnson, I believe you also had something.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull, well, I guess it would be two items. Item four from the Parks Commission on the pool, and then there would be item seven from the Finance Committee, also related to the pool.
Okay, give me a second.
Yeah, I had to adjust my paperwork as well. I don't blame you there.
Well, sometimes, you know, I gotta get the hard copy just so I can make the notes. All right, is there anyone else from the council who wishes to pull any other agenda item from the consent agenda? I see nothing in the chat room. I see no indications on the screen. So I would be looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda with those three items pulled. And those three items to re-establish that are item number four from the Parks Commission, which is the twenty twenty Donald Cops Municipal Pool Operations. Item number six from the Finance Committee agenda, that is adjusting licensing fees for twenty twenty due to the interruption in business operations. And item eight, I'm sorry, seven, from the Finance Agenda, that is the operation of the municipal pool for the current year. Those three items will be pulled for further discussion and separate action. I would entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda item. President Johnson moves?
Yep.
Okay, and seconded by Zerazua. I'm seeing these as a visual indication of a hand raised through the Zoom meeting, and that's just for the record and people who may not be watching the video. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Alders, when you vote, please unmute yourselves, cast your vote, and then mute yourselves again. We're approving the consent agenda item with those three items pulled. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing, actually, should we have done a roll call on that?
I was going to say, do we have a roll call because we have the claims paid?
Yeah, typically, we do a roll call, but I, I think we can get by because it was, I saw no one dissenting. So it would be unanimous consent. Clerk, if you'd like to call a roll, you could please do that now.
Okay. Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebone?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes with unanimous consent. The two items that were, well, three items that are pulled, two items of relation. President Johnson, I'll turn the floor over to you to talk about the Donald Cops Municipal Pool Operations and the Finance Agenda, which created the funding thereof.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I pulled this for a couple of reasons. Number one, as Chair of Finance Committee, I don't think we had a robust enough discussion about the fact that this would increase the amount of subsidy. So in other words, it would increase the burden from the, the operational budget to, that will be going into the pool. We generally subsidize, and I believe if I remember my numbers correctly, the number is about eighty-six thousand. What the city subsidizes the pool so that citizens of Stevens Point can enjoy that lovely complex. But because of the changes in how we are going to be forced to operate, then again, I, I think Director Kramer has done a great job of trying to figure out how that might work. We, of course, are reducing the amount of capacity that is allowed into the pool. We still have the same number of expenses, so we'll have less revenue coming in because of that reduction. That subsidy goes up to a hundred and six thousand and change. It's an additional seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. I think the other side of this is Portage County for a while was doing wonderfully as it related to this awful virus. And then we opened up, and now we are setting pace nearing, going up too quickly, and I am opposed to having the pool open. Of course, I voted in opposition to this at Finance. I think what it will do is create problems in a congested area. I'm also concerned that there will be lines outside the pool waiting for one or two people to leave so that one or two people can go in. It'll be a very narrow, narrow group of citizens who will be let in. And so therefore, we will be subsidizing, instead of eighty-six thousand subsidizing a great many Stevens Point residents to enjoy the pool, we'll be spending more money to subsidize even fewer people. So that's why I pulled it.
Okay, so I will turn it over to the Parks Director, Director Kramer, and then Comptroller Treasurer Ladak to talk about the reasoning behind the request. And, and I would be looking for a motion, I assume. So Director Kramer, let's start with you.
Sure, I can give some, some brief history just to kind of refresh how we got to where we are right now. As you, as you may recall, the, the items that were ever changing with COVID nineteen and the response in relation to the pool facility, as well as several things in the park system, they were not ready in time for the May Park Commission meeting. However, they were ready for the May Finance Committee meeting. At that time, we were underneath safer at home orders. We were developing plans to see what it could look like, and it was a regional approach at that point. By region, I mean there were several municipalities that surround us on our borders. We were all collectively talking about what we would do and how that would go forward. At that point, the Finance Committee did review the finances, and they recommended holding off on pool operations into a phase three approach of the Badger Bounce Back Plan as July first being the latest that we would even consider it. So that was kind of the first phase of this. As we know, things changed at our state government level, and further guidance was released by the CDC and the Health Department. Our regional approach unfortunately did not stay consistent because each community around us started having conversations on their own of how that related to their own individual communities. And as you probably are aware, municipalities around us, for example, the closest being Marshfield, Wausau, have voted to close their pools. We had a discussion at the Park Commission level, which is what was pulled here tonight in the consent agenda. The, the gist of our plan, what I can share with you is it would look unlike any pool season that we've ever seen. Essentially, we would be removing chairs, trying to reduce touchable surfaces as much as possible, and we would severely limit the number of people we would let in. We would change the pool schedule to try to turn it over more frequently, ultimately allowing us some windows that we could clean in between patron and bather loads is what it's called. And we've got a pretty lengthy plan of how that would look. To President Johnson's point, it, it would be similar expenses. We're forecasting about a hundred and sixteen thousand in expenses. The budgeted expenses for twenty twenty were a hundred and thirty thousand, just over that. So it's a little bit reduction in expenses. However, our revenue is forecasted to be significantly less, less than twenty-five percent at about ten thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Again, these are estimates based on what we've run for numbers. There's some logistical things that we've worked out in terms of travel lanes coming in and out of the pool. We have, we're closely with the Portage County Health Department with our plan. There's guidance from the Portage County Health Department that in summary say, if we follow our plan, it's allowed. There's guidance from the Wisconsin Department of Health that speaks the opposite of that. There's language on their website that ultimately recommends pools closed. And the CDC has two different sections that we've been evaluating that give guidance for allowable openings. So what staff has done is created the plan. We've taken it to, and, and now we're looking for the direction based on the vote tonight. We will enact that plan, or we will winterize the pool based on what we are told here in the final vote this evening.
Okay, Comptroller, anything to add?
The only thing that I would add is, so as far as the budget impact, you're looking at seventeen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars according to basically the, the numbers that Director Kramer produced in terms of the difference between the original budget and the original projections. And now with the, the lesser revenue with being able to let less people into the pool. And then you also look at the potential that if you didn't have the pool open at all, you'd still have some expenses, but it would be much less than usual. So if I compare those two scenarios, you know, the total difference between being open or being closed is sixty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. So that would be the number if you're trying to weigh, okay, what's the cost of that service or what's the cost of that decision between being open or being closed? Basically, it's, it's the sixty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. So that's really what you would have to weigh to say, okay, is it worth that amount of money or not to have that amenity available for the residents of Stevens Point for this summer? Ultimately, you know, we can make it work financially either way. So it is a hit, and it's in, you know, combined with a lot of other things that are obviously going on this year, but it's not insurmountable, especially if we're just taking a, a one-off, one-time kind of hit on, on this.
Okay, Corey, just to, to help simplify things, especially for myself, the, the cost of opening the pool July first with the reduced staff after the anticipated revenue is what? Projected?
Well, so basically, you're looking at a total subsidy from the general fund of a hundred and four thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. But then you also look at the fact that even if the pool is closed, you're still going to have expenses. And those expenses would be forty-one thousand nine seventy-seven, according to the numbers that Director Kramer put forward. So basically, the, the. So basically, the, the difference between open and closed is the sixty-two, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, just because you will have expenses for maintaining the pool even if it's not open.
Understood. Director Kramer?
And just, and Cory mentioned this, I just wanted to, our budgeted subsidy amount is eighty-six thousand, nine seventy-two on an annual basis for 2020. And if you look at actual out-of-pocket expenditure, 2020 was budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. We are forecasting that we would spend, if we opened July 1st, a hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars because we lost the month of June. So there's less staffing, and there's some less operational expenses because we haven't opened that month. But there is several fixed costs that we still would incur.
Okay. President Johnson, did you have anything you wanted to add, or should we go to anyone else who wishes to speak?
No, I'm curious. I think this is an important decision. And again, the Finance Committee made a decision, of course, from a financial perspective. I think this has broader implications, and I think it's important enough that the entire council weigh in on a vote. And so I would love to hear them. I'd like to, I guess my motion would be to reject the recommendation of Finance Committee and Parks Commission.
Okay, and
And I'll second that.
Jeremy Slawinski is seconding that.
Can I comment?
Yeah, you had comments also, and then we'll go to Alder Jennings.
And I did, I did vote in favor of this at the parks level. But after seeing what had happened these last few weeks with the outbreak and the just, I just, I really, I have to echo President Johnson's comments that I, I just don't think, you know, for, for the month or month and a half that we're going to open it, I, I just don't, I don't think it's worth the risk. And then also, obviously, the the cost of, you know, running it, I, I just, I feel that we're, we're going to be in a better position if we just keep it closed for this year. So that's why I'd second it. Thank you.
You. Alder Jennings?
Yes, thank you. I reviewed the CDC considerations for public pools, hot tubs, and water playgrounds during COVID-19. And interestingly, there was, I think it was a New York Times article just yesterday about, about pools. There's overwhelming consensus that masks work, and one of the criticisms about opening pools or water environments is that obviously people are not going to wear masks. The other thing is, excuse me, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to keep kids from, to six feet apart. We can't even do that with, with adults, so I'm not convinced that that is even remotely possible, and staff could maintain that. I also would like to know what is the plan if staff, if a staff member or client tests positive after they were at the pool? What is the plan for that? And what would be the cost to the city for mitigating that exposure?
Okay. We'll see if we can get to those answers. We'll get to the director here in a bit. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Can I speak? This is Alder Zarazua.
Yep, absolutely.
So I'm also on the Park Commission, and I felt this was a really difficult topic. Obviously, we can't predict what's going to happen with COVID. We're trying to stay ahead of it, and I feel like, you know, everything's different from one week to the next. I'm glad that as a council, we're looking at this as a whole. Just I felt like the things we were looking at, we had conflicting recommendations between the CDC and what Portage County and DHS recommend, and so I think that's what made it really hard to say whether or not we should move forward with opening the pool. But I do think it's a very valid concern that if we do open it and then we have to close it, that we'll have spent a lot more money going that route too, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Nibon?
Yeah, I agree with the comments that have been made. I think with Portage County Health Department saying we now are experiencing community spread, I'm concerned about exposing city employees. Perhaps they can be better utilized, making the parks even better because you can more easily safety socially distance at the parks than you could at the pool. I think it's going to be really hard to keep people apart. And I think we grew up running through the sprinklers, so there may be a run on sprinklers in the city, and that might be good for local business.
All right, thank you. Alder Morrow?
I think we should open the pool. I think it's a, I think that Director Kramer's doing, is trying to follow the guidelines that he has. That's going to be a long, hot summer. If things don't work out, we could, we could close it. The pool's not a big money-making place anyway. It's a, it's a basic community asset. And a lot of people don't feel good about going down to, like, Iverson, going down to the stream. They'd rather go to, they'd rather go to a pool. A lot of folks feel safer at, at a pool as well. And we have it. I think we should also try it. If it doesn't go well, then we, we could end up, then we would have, we'd have to close it, but at least we, but at least we also tried. There's a lot of folks who really depend on our pool. They like our pool. They look forward to it. I've used it. It's a good pool. I think that we should try it. It's, it's one of the community assets that we have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Alder Fishler?
Hi, Alder Fishler here. I think that, you know, if we weren't in the middle of a pandemic, it would be perfectly fine to open the pool, but we all have to remember that we still need to remain safe and take precautions. And I don't know, I think just with the recent spread, I think it's something that we need to be mindful of.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Director, I'm going to be coming back to you in just a second to answer the questions. I was hoping that if there were any questions for you, we'd get them out in the discussion, and then you can answer them all at once. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding the pool closure or opening? Okay, we'll close the discussion. Director, I'll turn it back over to you.
So the first, the question that was asked was, what would we do if staff tested positive? And that's a very good question. We've been in pretty close communications with Gary Garsky, talking about just that scenario, not only for lifeguards, but also for even our park staff, because as, as you're probably all aware, we do double our staff. We bring on twenty-plus people into our parks in the summer as we get ready with forestry operations and park operations. The short answer to that is, we have decided in our plan that we would treat our lifeguards the same way. So essentially, if someone, the first steps is we put in mitigation strategies. So social distancing with our staff, our break periods being that when the rotation happens, they're not within six feet of each other. We have mask cloth coverings that the lifeguards would wear that's approved for pool usage. We've put up things like sneeze guards. We're required to have an attendant that would be only tasked with reminding people of the social distancing. We would be, if somebody had to be removed from the pool because they weren't following it, they would be the ones that would help us enforce it. They also would carry the cleaner the entire time the pool was open. They cannot be a lifeguard. Their sole duty would be attendant to continually clean touchable surfaces. Let's play the scenario out that somebody would feel ill, and they would go home. That would be practices that we would tell them upfront. At that point, we would follow our local health department guidance, working with their healthcare provider and the healthcare, or the, the local health department, in which we would consider them potentially a COVID person that's contracted COVID. If that were to happen, at that point, we would immediately go into contact tracing. So if that, we would look into see the four questions that have been given to us are number one, have you had direct contact with this person? So let's just say Guard A. We would check with all the other guards and say, have you had direct contact with them, physical contact? Second question would be, were you within six feet of them for fifteen minutes or more? Third question would be, could the person have had contact with any of your respiratory secretions? So did they cough on you? Did they sneeze on you? Things of that nature. Last question would be, did you stay overnight for one night in the household with that person? Any of those questions being a yes would automatically trigger another guard or any of the other staff that would say yes to that to enter quarantine to yourself, self-isolation. Within the plan, we did share with our Parks Commission that we have to be prepared that there could be a closure. So say something happened with the staff. One of the real risks here that we have to be aware of, and I think multiple others mentioned it, is some of those staff could have that happen. We have to be prepared for it, and we could potentially have to close for a few days if we were short-staffed or things of that nature. At this point, we believe we have excess staff to be able to pull it off, but that's something that could happen. If that happened, we also have to be aware of contact of a contact. So essentially, let's say a guard's family member were to test positive for COVID-19. What does that mean? Does everybody that works with that lifeguard have to go home? Based on the guidance we've gotten right now, we would treat a contact of a contact to be prepared, wearing cloth face coverings, doing those mitigation strategies that they've done. However, they would be left at work, just like our other staff would be, until, say, the other guard would then become ill or be, would be, become, have COVID-19. At that point, they become a direct contact. All of those questions kick in. So it's a long explanation, but that's what we have in our plan that we can be prepared for it. The second question was cost to mitigate. If you look at our expense in the budget that we include in the Finance Committee, we are anticipating an additional five thousand dollars in just expenses for cleaning supplies. When we turn the pool over, what I meant essentially is we'd close the doors. We would use, it's called a whizzy wand, where we put water into a solution, cleaning solution. We spray down the entire deck. We'd go into our locker room, our bathroom facilities. We'd spray all those areas down because they are made for water. Then we would go through all the touchable surfaces and sanitize them. Extreme, I should say, extreme steps that we would take, but we're prepared to do it based on the guidance we've gotten. And to be quite honest with you, several of these steps are happening in your park restrooms every day already and have been since the first of May. So the staff has become pretty familiar with some of those steps. Not a question, but I guess the last thing I'd just like to add to the committee here, to the council, is it is a controlled environment. So we know that Iverson and Buchholz, where the beaches areas are, are busy. One difference in a lifeguard setting with the pool is we have some oversight, and it is much safer for those that maybe are just starting to trial with swimming because we have lifeguards at the deck. And this would give the community a place to go. And again, we've got a plan. We'll put it into place if you're comfortable. If not, we'll go whichever direction this committee directs us. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to President Johnson and then Alder Jennings again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to share an experience with two of my employees, and I won't even say whether they're male or female. They had contact. One of them was in, in Portage County, actually, with COVID-positive individual. That person was asked to stay away from my site and self-quarantine. We worked with Marathon County, of course, Health Department and HR. And then we had a second one just recently, and we're working with HR and the Health Department. While at home, and here's the other part of the expense thing that I don't think we've had a discussion about. While an individual, let's say they've had a contact, is at home, self-quarantining, quarantining per a policy, because of COVID, they may qualify for CARES Act funding. However, municipalities, for the most part, are not compensated for CARES Act funding. So in other words, we are supposed to cover those expenses per the act. Municipalities are not always compensated for those expenses. So if someone is a positive or someone is in contact with a positive, they may very well qualify for the law that says you can be compensated because you've been impacted by COVID. The city would not necessarily be compensated for that payment to the employee.
Thank you. Alder Jennings?
Thank you. And thank you, Director Kramer. However, you, you have dealt thoroughly with staff. However, I'm not hearing anything about the public, and I'm not sure how contact tracing would happen if after the fact, you find out somebody was exposed and came into the pool.
That actually would go through the county health department. And that's what they're doing now with the others. Director Kramer, you have something to add?
We also do have in the plan that we would take name, address, and phone number for anyone that would enter the pool for contact tracing capabilities. I apologize, I forgot to mention that.
But the actual contact tracing would still go through the county health department. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Cory, you're off mute. Did you want to say something? Comptroller?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I see no visual indicators, nothing in the chat room. The motion is to, and allow me to summarize, President Johnson, to close the Cops municipal pool for the 2020 operating season. I know that combines both of the actions of the Parks Commission and the Finance Committee, but that is the motion, and it was seconded by Alder Slawinski. Hearing none. Clerk, could you please get a roll call on this? The motion is to close the pool. If you are in favor of the motion, you will vote yes. If you are opposed to the motion, you will vote no, and we'll turn it over to the clerk.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
No.
Okay.
Okay. I believe that was a nine-one. Is that correct, Clerk?
That's correct.
The motion is adopted. The Donald Cops municipal pool will not be in operation for the 2020 season. The other item that was pulled was from Alder Jennings, adjusting licensing fees for the 2020 year due to interruption in business operations. Alder Jennings, you have the floor.
Yes, first, I'd like to apologize for not addressing this at Finance. So in reviewing this and, and also discussing it with, with some staff members, the city has staff costs related to this licensing. And to not draw in the revenues, we still have to, to pay people. The slight reduction in licensing fees of, it's about twenty-five dollars. I, I don't want to sound rude, but that's really not going to save any of these businesses. However, the total combined cost of that to the city is over eight thousand dollars, and that becomes a fair amount of money that, that we're losing. And again, we still have to meet our costs. We have staff costs related to this. Then my question, or just, no one has to answer these, but why this group? How about other groups that pay for licenses? Are we going to forego their license fees? And how do we cover and recoup those costs? Again, why this particular group? There was a grant made available by the city to help businesses during this time of COVID. This, these businesses could have applied for that. There was a criteria that the Community Development Department put in terms of evaluating who would receive that grant. And so I would like to make the motion that we reject the reduction of license fees.
Okay, do we have a second for that motion?
This is President Johnson. I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Jennings, seconded by Johnson. Discussion there.
I have one more comment.
We'll go to President Johnson and then back to Alder Jennings.
Yeah, and number one, thank you for, Alder Jennings, for bringing this up. I think I voted, or I didn't vote, that wouldn't, I didn't say anything about this necessarily. I think the point about all the other permits is a good one, and one I honestly didn't think of, so I'm glad she said that. I guess, do we discount building permits and inspection permits and the fees that we charge, you know, for property maintenance violations? Her, her point is well-taken, so I appreciate the point, and I have a tendency to agree from that perspective then.
Thank you. We'll go to Alder Dalton and then back to Alder Jennings. Alder Dalton, I did mute you because we're getting some background noise. There you go. Thanks.
Yeah, Alder Dalton here. I'm supportive of the action of the Finance Committee from last week, and I think while twenty-five percent reduction is trivial, maybe in the grand scheme of a lot of businesses, these small things that we can do will help for businesses, especially since many of them were unable to be awarded the grant that we had in the prior round. Additionally, part of the reasoning for the licensing is that they were inoperable during the twenty-five percent of the year. And so why are they paying to be licensed for a business that is not operating? And so I, I do think while the staff time is, is a consideration, that I think the impact on the businesses is greater.
Thank you, Alder Dalton. Alder Jennings?
I'd like to say that I'm channeling former Alder Phillips. Just to, I guess, respond to Alder Dalton. When these businesses make lots of money, do they refund that, that money to the city? When these businesses make lots of money, do they refund that that money to the city? Obviously, the answer, the answer is no on that. Again, this is about covering our costs and having the revenue to to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor Alder Nibon here, I have a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
I know, um I struggled with this too. I thought, boy, isn't this kind of the least that we can do? But when you start giving one consideration, you really have to give all consideration. And I don't think that we can afford that uh. In staff time or lost revenue. So I would be uh supporting uh the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alder Slawinski.
Yeah, I guess I would just echo that as well, that I just feel that, you know, it's all about being fair. I mean, I I completely understand the the reasoning and the, I appreciate it, but. Again, I I think if, you know, if we're gonna do it, we have to do it for all and I I I don't like uh Alder Jennings had stated that the twenty five dollars. Is really not gonna make a great, break a business, so I will be in support of the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'm not seeing anything visually, not seeing anything in the chat room. Um I I do like the idea of the motion on the floor. The city has costs and people don't understand that we don't have uh unlimited deep pockets to to be giving things away. We're hit just as hard uh with the COVID nineteen virus. And the all, all of the changes that we've been forced to do, Corey can certainly attest. Uh to our projected revenue shortfalls um and how we're gonna try and make ends meet. Plus the additional costs uh providing uh for providing a safe environment to our staff. Uh you know, we, there are things that have come up and asked for reductions. And I believe that it, those reductions will help those businesses, but the city has to cover our costs as well. Um and you know, even things like the the parklet ordinance, there were fees associated with that because our parking spots have fees. Uh and we, they cost us money to maintain those. So um and I think we're discussing some of that later in the agenda too. But I'm I'm glad that the council feels that uh the taxpayer dollars are are significantly important, and I appreciate that. With that, I see no one else wishing to speak. I will, the motion on the floor is to reject the adjustment of licensing fees for twenty twenty. Which means they would not change. If you are in favor of that motion, you will vote yes. Uh if you are opposed, you will vote no. And Clerk Kroll Kramer, please call that roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
No.
Leek.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Nine one.
Nine one, that motion passes. There will be no adjustments to the fees. Item number six is on page sixty two of your packet, and that is to award the twenty twenty Gurkey Football Stadium Exterior Restoration Project. Number twenty ten to Holton Brothers out of Grafton, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed fifty three thousand six hundred dollars. Director Kramer, did you have anything to add? This is just uh some repair work that needs to be done at Gurkey Stadium, correct?
Correct, yep. And a little bit over what the budget amount was, but we still have contingency funds remaining from two other projects, so no budget impact for additional borrowing or dollars.
Thank you. Alder Persons, uh first of all, anyone wishing to speak? Okay, Alder Shore.
Uh representing Gurkey Park Neighborhood and and recognizing that um. Uh the problem will go worse, grow worse and get more expensive uh if we delay. Uh I move approval of the uh the contract award.
Thank you, seconded by Slawinski. Discussion. Seeing none. The motion is to approve the bid and accept the bid in the amount not to exceed fifty three thousand six hundred dollars. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no. And clerk, will please call the roll.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Ten zero, that motion is adopted. Item number seven is on page sixty three of your packets. That's a resolution for a conditional use permit. To operate a partial multiple dwelling complex at thirty four twenty one Church Street. Director Knosky, anything to add?
Uh now, at this time, Plan Commissioned to review this uh in our meeting in July. Did recommend approval with the conditions outlined within the resolution.
Okay. Alders, what are your wishes?
Uh Mayor Alder Nibon, I will move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Alder Nibon to approve. We have a second. Seconded by Morrow. Discussion there. Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Ten zero.
Ten zero, that is adopted. Item number eight is on page sixty four of your packets, and that's a conditional use uh to construct a front porch. Set back fifteen feet, six inches from the Franklin Franklin Street right away at five sixteen Franklin Street. Director Knosky, anything to add there?
Uh Plan Commission met, recommend approval as uh outlined within the resolution. Staff agrees.
Thank you. Um Alder Persons.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, motion by Jennings, seconded by Zarazua. Discussion. Seeing none, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Ten zero.
unanimous consent, that is approved. Item number nine is on page sixty five of your packet, and that's a resolution for a conditional use permit. To construct a gymnasium and lunchroom addition and enclosing an existing overhang at six hundred Maria Drive, also known as Madison Elementary School. Director, anything to add there? Nope. Pretty straightforward stuff. Alder Persons, what are your wishes?
Motion to uh motion to approve the uh permit for Madison Elementary School.
Thank you, motion by Morrow.
Seconded. Leek.
Seconded by Leek. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none. Clerk, would you please call that roll?
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Unanimous consent, that's approved. Item number ten is on page sixty six, and that's a conditional use permit. To construct a lunchroom and kitchen at eighteen hundred East Avenue, known as Jefferson Elementary. President Johnson.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Morrow. Discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
And Jennings.
Aye.
Unanimous approval as well. Thank you. Item number eleven is on page sixty seven, and that is a resolution to rezone thirty forty one Michigan Avenue. From B four commercial to M one light industrial. I think most everybody was at the Plan Commission. Director, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Not unless the uh council has any questions.
Thank you. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? Alder Fishler.
I move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by President Johnson. Discussion. Seeing none, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Jennings.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Morrow.
Aye.
Okay, ten zero.
That is approved as well. Item number thirteen is on page seventy, and that's an ordinance amendment for tourist rooming houses. Uh with the sections of our Code of Ordinances outlined under chapter twenty three. Uh there was, I believe, some discussion in regards to a a concern that Alder Shore brought forward. Logan, our city attorney, would you care to explain the uh legality of this ordinance?
Mayor, Mayor, did you skip uh item number twelve?
Yeah, thank you.
Did I? Oh, I am so sorry. I apologize. We'll get to that in a second. Item number twelve, going back on page sixty eight of your packet. That's a conditional use permit to construct four duplexes on an unassigned address lot. At Doolittle Drive and the parcel ID is outlined in our agenda. I apologize for that. Director Knosky, go ahead. Anything to add?
Uh no, I don't believe so. Uh the commission may recall that there were thirteen original conditions as part of this conditional use permit. Staff in consultation with the fire department did add three additional uh conditions as as part of the final resolution that's before each night. Would recommend with that uh laundry list of conditions.
Thank you. Alder Persons, what are your wishes? President Johnson.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Morrow. Discussion there. Okay, clerk, would you please call that roll?
Morrow.
Aye.
Fishler.
Aye.
Dalton.
Aye.
Leek.
Aye.
Nibon.
Aye.
Slawinski.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Zarazua.
Aye.
Shore.
Aye.
Jennings.
Aye.
Okay, ten zero.
Ten zero, that's adopted. Now, onto item number thirteen, that ordinance amendment regarding tourist rooming houses. City Attorney, the floor is yours.
Uh yes, Mayor, so we, uh myself and uh at at least Alder Shore and possibly some other staff members were contacted by a community member today. Who owns a a number of rental properties and is interested in potentially using those for short term rentals. And I had some uh some questions about uh the authority of the city to enact an ordinance uh of the type that is being looked at here. So I did uh dig into that a little bit. The the relevant statute here is chapter sixty six, section one zero one four. And it's actually pretty brief. Um the title is Limits on Residential Dwelling Rental Prohibited. And essentially, the uh. The the things that we're prohibited from doing relate to the number of days. Uh both um both the period for which it can be uh rented. Uh and the total number of days in a year or in a in in a period of time. So we're prohibited as a municipality from enacting an ordinance that quote prohibits the rental of residential dwelling for seven consecutive days or longer. And we are prohibited. Uh from enacting uh limitations. Uh in terms of the number of days in a given year or in a three hundred sixty five day period. Uh unless that uh unless that number of days is at least one hundred eighty days. Uh so we could limit it to two hundred days per year. We couldn't limit it to one hundred and seventy five per days, uh days per year. Uh but in terms of there being uh restrictions such as the type we're looking at here, you know, things pertaining to the zoning code, things pertaining to. It being the residence of the of the owner, um the statute does not prohibit those types of regulations. In fact, it states uh verbatim, we'll read it here, this is part two C. Says, nothing in this subsection limits the authority of a political subdivision to enact an ordinance regulating the rental of a residential dwelling. In a manner that is not inconsistent with the provisions of parts A and D. And A and D are the parts relating to the number of days that I mentioned previously.
Sorry, muted. Alder Jennings?
We move to approve the ordinance amendment for tourist rooming houses.
Thank you. Seconded by Alder Person Shore. Discussion.
Am I getting the floor, Mayor? Alder.
Alder Dalton, there you go, I'm sorry.
I raised my hand.
Yep, I got it. I I was trying to cover all the bases. Alder Dalton, you have the floor.
Yeah, um I haven't really been supportive of this discussion of the ordinance amendment and um I guess I take. I don't think that the framing and fear mongering about what these tourist rooming houses in neighborhoods. Um is has really led to kind of a positive uh framework of how this could operate within our community. Especially given that we haven't actually had any problems. And so I think to set up these circumstances based on problems that aren't happening um is a little premature. Um and I also think that uh limiting whether the owner permanently resides in the building. Um or not uh limits the market of these tourist rooming houses that we have available. And so when families are coming to our community and need to rent out, uh basically a household. Um there's basically nothing that will be available for them. Um and I think that misses out on the pretty substantial market, um which doesn't do much good for our community. Um also because maybe those families will end up liking it so much they move here. Um and have a positive um experience in our community. So I will not be supporting this amendment tonight.
Thank you. President Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I guess I'm um. Alder Dalton owns a uh rooming house, so I I'm maybe the attorney can help us here. Better understand. I I know when I'm on county board. And anything that comes to county board related to the solid waste department, which is a customer of mine, I always. Even though I don't have a direct fiduciary game, um the perception is is there, so I always recuse myself. Um so I'm I'm wondering the appropriateness based on on Alder Dalton's ownership of a a tourist rooming house.
Let's first go to Alder Dalton. Alder Dalton, uh I believe we saw a posting for your apartment or room. But I'd like you to respond to President Johnson's uh comments in regards to your ownership of a tourist rooming house.
Yeah, I no longer operate a tourist rooming house, so um. Yeah, that's not really an appropriate point in this discussion. Thank you.
Okay. Attorney Beverage, if you'd care to chime in, but I think Alder Dalton has stated she does not currently. Rent a a room or own a tourist rooming house. Uh so I think the the point is moot, but if you have something to add, I would appreciate it.
No, I mean, if 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 that's not the case, I'm not going to start speculating about any sort of legalities related to it.
Great. Uh and as every Alder, I think, knows, that if you do have any sort of financial interest in any of the agenda items we discuss. Uh the proper action is to remove yourself and recuse yourself from that vote. Alder Leek, you mentioned that you have a comment. Uh you have the floor, sir.
I I concur with Dalton. I think uh we should be more open to uh visitors here, and I think uh bringing in the extra income for certain residents. Is is a good thing. I understand that there are some, you know, extreme situations where someone's, you know, on the other side of the country. But I don't think we should be necessarily legislating based on extreme examples or, you know, things that haven't happened yet. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other Alders or public members? Alder Shore, and then we'll go back to Alder or Attorney Beverage.
Thank you, Mayor. So generally, I have been very much in support of tourist rooming houses. Um and I was interested to hear the the mention of the. State statute provision in terms of total numbers of days because um. That is a restriction that has come up in the discussion. that is a restriction that has come up in the discussions, has been raised. I do not favor that. Um, the owner occupancy where I believe we are following in the footsteps of uh, the city of Madison in terms of our approach here, that is something. The that is a requirement that I've always supported, although just as a one last note, um, I've shifted my position somewhat on that. Uh, I've been persuaded, and um, I believe it's reflected here, um, and Director Krasinski can confirm for me. Um, the shift in my position is that I became convinced that in uh, R four, B four, and above in intensity of zoning, um, although I think we're mainly talking about R four and B four, that uh, I while I oppose non-occupied owner occupied for R one, two, and three, I have been convinced that it would be appropriate for non-owner occupied for R four, B four. So if I could have confirmation that that is what we have for.
Director, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, correct. So the 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 ordinance is before you tonight uh, would allow non-owner occupied uh, tourist rooming houses in the R four, R five, and all subsequent business zoning districts. So even our business transition areas. Uh, also before you tonight is any owner occupied uh, tourist rooming house is allowed uh, as a permitted use. And so, uh, yeah, I'm more than happy to answer other questions, but we've we've had a pretty thorough discussion on this a number of times at at plant commission, uh, and so this is before you tonight.
Thank you, director. Let's go to Attorney Beverage and then Alder Jennings again.
So just to touch on uh, the notion from Alder Dalton about you know, trying to address potential problems that could happen with these ahead of time rather than saying, hey, you know, let's let this stuff, uh, let's let this this activity happen, and then we can react to it in case there are problems. Now, I I don't have an opinion one way or the other about whether or not that's the right approach. However, if that were going to be the approach, you really wouldn't want to put this into the zoning code because the problem is that if you open things really wide up via the zoning code, and then you end up having some problematic places or situations or whatever it is, you can end up with things where you have, uh, you're trying to then shrink what people can do under the zoning code, and you end up with legal non-conforming uses. And and there's nothing in the statute that requires this mechanism to be reg, the regulatory mechanism to be the zoning code. Um, you could use something else. You could use something in the zoning code and another regulatory mechanism layered on top of it. Uh, but that's just one thing, one thing to keep in mind. You know, the the zoning code tends to only ratchet in one direction. Uh, that is, it becomes more lenient. It's really tough to ratchet it back the other direction without a lot of headaches.
Thank you. Alder Jennings?
Yes, even though we we have addressed this a number of times in in different uh, venues, I just want to bring us back to this should not be a discussion about personal preferences and things like that. This is a zoning question. Zoning relates to what kind of businesses do we want where, where? This is a commercial transaction. So if we're going to say, well, I I just like the idea of having this business here. Well, what about the nail salon that is not allowed in certain zoning areas? Uh, I just want to bring everyone's attention to this is about zoning, and that's the blueprint for what we want where. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, clerk, help me out. I I kind of lost track. Do we have a motion on this one?
Yes, we have a motion and a second to approve.
That's right. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Don't believe I see any. So the motion is to approve the zoning amendments as presented. Um, and if you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will call that roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
No.
Niebon?
Aye.
Leek?
No.
Dalton?
No.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
No.
I have six four. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Six four, the motion is adopted. Item number fourteen, page seventy-three of your packet is the purchase of one thousand nine Second Street. Director Krasinski, anything to add there?
Nope. Uh, as outlined in the staff report, this is more of a strategic acquisition as we try to build the block uh, for redevelopment uh, along Second Street and Center Point Drive adjacent to the former Lullaby, now North Side Yard project. Would recommend approval. Uh, the redevelopment authority would like to close on this uh, by the end of the month, if not mid-July at the latest.
Thank you very much. Alders, what are your wishes? Alder Niebon?
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by President Johnson. Discussion there. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Okay, nine to one?
Nine to one, that is approved. Item number fifteen is on page eighty-two of your packet, and that is to award the twenty twenty pavement maintenance program twenty point or dash zero four to Farmer Asphalt of Wisconsin in the amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty cents. Director Badun, did you have anything to add here?
Nothing to add, no.
Thank you. Alder persons, what are your wishes?
Oh, I I move to approve the two thousand twenty pay pavement maintenance program twenty dash four to Farmer in the amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty cents.
Thank you. Seconded by President Johnson, I assume?
Yeah, one question.
And a question. So President Johnson, seconds, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for Director Badun. I think you had stated this at the public works. Um, the price of oil is down, so the bid came in what um, pretty well below what you had budgeted. Could you remind us what your budget was on on this?
Sure, and I I've moved things about at my desk, so I don't have the piece of paper for anybody.
Guesstimate, a guesstimate.
Three hundred and fifty-one thousand is what I recall was ours.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Seeing none, clerk, would you please call this roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Zerazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Okay, ten to zero?
Ten zero, that is approved. Item number sixteen is on page eighty-three of your packet, and that is to fund and award the Bicycle Network Improvement Project from the TAP grant project to Century Fence out of Pewalki, Wisconsin, in an amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh, as most of the Alders probably recall, the project was estimated around four hundred thousand. Uh, this bid, when we put it out, came in two hundred and twenty-six thousand and some change over the projected amount. And before we go to our speaker list, I would like Director Badun to talk about that bid and what we found out subsequently when we had S E H look into why it was higher.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, y- yes, I mean, it it was definitely a surprise to us that it would be, you know, necessarily that high over what was uh, estimated by the engineer as well as what was even the original estimate uh, back in twenty sixteen. Uh, however, looking at it, they went through a lot of their bids. S E H uh, is very active in transportation uh, to see what they could find. Some throughout the state, they looked at those which I had included uh, with the memo. Yeah, after looking at that, as well as discussing with uh, another firm that does that sort of epoxy work, um, to conclude that it has been for a period of time, uh, probably actually going back even be before the data that S E H had provided to us to be uh, a bidder's environment at the moment. Um, and that pertains to, as we found out, both uh, the epoxy, you know, pavement markings, as well as even traffic control devices um, seem to be on the the uptick over pre- previous years. Uh, so that demand, the laws of supply and demand thus indicate that as the demand increases, uh, you know, so is, of course, the the price of the supply is generally held constant. So we're looking at that information there, you know, we concluded and also between talking with S E H as well as even individuals at the the DOT that, you know, the the numbers, although high, uh, seem to represent what is being observed, you know, in in other bids. And that going back even, I said, for for a period of time, um, doesn't necessarily answer the question as to why the engineer's estimate was otherwise low and doesn't reflect that um, if they otherwise had the information. But uh, we all conclude that that's, we're not likely to benefit, at least not significantly, if we were to rebid. Also, with rebidding, it takes us into a kind of a limbo state with our funding and, you know, kind of sends us down a a rabbit hole of possibilities as to what could potentially happen going that that direction. So packaging that all together, although we're talking about, you know, significant money, monies that could be done to uh, you know, improve Brick Street, which is removed from the capital budget this last year, or you know, safety improvements and intersections like the temporary lights that were suggested Green and and Stanley, um, are the additional, something we talked about a lot, alley repairs to to get those um, significant dollars that, you know, I guess need to otherwise be balanced out. Uh, but just otherwise figured still when combined with the federal dollars that we'll get, you know, likely the city will save money, um, unless we're looking way into the long term uh, and willing to put this project well on hold and rebid it to the future um, at some point in time when the environment may change, we're still monies ahead versus having to foot the entire bill on our own.
Thank you. And director, it's also uh, been questioned, we purchased some striping equipment last year. I understand the difference between the the latex paint and the epoxy paint, but for those watching and listening at home, could you explain the difference this bid was for epoxy paint? Um, and what, explain the difference between what our striper does and what this epoxy does and the life expectancy of each?
Sure. Uh, y- yeah, while they're otherwise look very much as you're driving by to see that they're white and yellow, you know, lines on the on road and markings on the lines. Uh, the latex paint that we're capable of doing is very similar to anything that people have used on a on a consumer, you know, basis. Um, it's just, uh, you know, a latex type paint. It 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 dries, um, is its, you know, process of of curing. Where epoxy is exactly, as people are familiar even with various forms of epoxy, it's a multi-part component that actually has a chemical reaction is its curing part. It's not a matter of just, you know, giving up its moisture content and and drying that epoxy, of course, you know, just as in other similar products, you know, has a is more durable. Uh, that chemical reaction creates a more durable product uh, in life expectancy, depending, of course, on how much it's driven over the wear that you might see. You, the latex paint is probably one to three years. The epoxy is probably in the three to seven-year range of expected life.
Okay, thank you. And uh, I know because the question's probably going to come up, would we be able to stripe this in latex paint at a reduced cost, and how would that affect the grant?
What I understand talking with the DOT is that we're not otherwise set up a in the programming as far as the local force count to do that. Uh, when I inquired about the possibility of doing that, since we didn't have the equipment at the time that the application went in uh, to see if we can do that, I was informed that that would be a forfeiture of our grant. Um, if we wish to go that way, we would have to reimburse for the design fees that we've already taken on, and then we would be on our own.
Thank you. Uh, we'll reserve the right to come back to you later because I know there's going to be lots of questions. Commercial Treasure, I'd like you to take the floor and explain uh, your thoughts uh, in regards to how this additional two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars would be funded.
Sure. So for the funding of that additional cost, uh, what we could do for right now is uh, to take that out of fund balance. And then um, later on in the year, typically September of every year, we look at how the budget is trending and how fund balance is trending and uh, look at how much fund balance we can put into capital. So the effect there um, is we can use that fund balance for now, and then, of course, with the understanding that later on in the year, that does affect how much fund balance we're able to put into capital uh, for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. And again, we'll reserve the right to have you come back. Um, I think that's enough background information. I would like to go to our speaker list. We had three people pre-register. Uh, we'll start with Trevor Rourke. Name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes, sir.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, mayor. Uh, Trevor Rourke, six zero one, Washington. Um, speaking tonight as the Chair of the City's Bicycle and Pedestrian Street Safety Commission, as well as a co-author of this TAP grant. I'm very thankful for the last four years, uh, working with many city staff and support as well as public officials and residents uh, with this TAP grant and winning the TAP grant. Uh, when Scranta was awarded, was a big success for modernizing our city's transportation network. Uh, not so easy achievement on any scale. With over thirteen miles of bicycle facilities planned, connecting residents to commercial districts and employers, kids to their schools, and visitors to downtown and beyond, this project will greatly improve the safety as well as shared use of our streets. Uh, there's a lot of people excited to see this project implemented. But here we are. This is our chance to follow through with the bid, the bicycle facilities that we promised, uh, even with this bump in the road. After reading Director Badun's memo, it's apparent that the city doesn't have much of a choice but to accept the bid, absorb the extra cost, and move forward. Rebidding has a very good chance of coming back with similar results, according to public works staff and uh, Ms. Johnson, Department of Transportation. And it would add further risk to losing the grant. If this doesn't happen tonight, there's a severe risk to losing this grant in our commission. Formerly the BPAC was told by WISTOT that failing one grant greatly reduces the chance of getting a future grant. I know that I have a strong bias because of uh, how close I am to this grant. Uh, but I do want to share another reason council should accept this bid tonight. Community resilience. Communities around the country were brought to their knees with coronavirus. The streets in Stevens Point were almost empty with safer-at-home orders. And what did we do? We walked and biked more. There were more people outside enjoying our public right-of-way. In more than twenty-two years that I've lived in Stevens Point, never have I seen so many people walking and biking. It's just been amazing. These, this indicator that I've seen tells us the priority restreets have to shift, transitioning to better accommodate bicyclists and pedestrians in order to become a more resilient weathering future crisis ahead. And successfully implementing this grant is a piece of that resilience puzzle. Um, please align with the director's recommendation. Um, I really hope that council votes to accept this bid tonight. Thank you.
And you got ten seconds left. Thanks, Trevor. I know, I know you prepare those very well, and I appreciate it. Next up, uh, we will go to, uh, let's see, Michael Mira?
Thank you. I concur with what Trevor said, but one important thing that uh, Director Badun said was, if you default on the grant, you're responsible to pay back the eighty percent funding you got on the design. So not only wouldn't you get the uh, pedestrian improvement, you'd end up uh, getting into a hole because they charge you eighty percent of what you had on design. And so I think that although it's uh, a tough position to be in, I think you almost got to take it. They backed us into a corner. And why would you uh, just say, well, I'm not, I'm going to uh, not spend the additional dollars and get nothing and get a bill? So I think it's incumbent on the council to award this contract.
Thanks, Mike, and I'm not sure we got your name and address from the previous comments, but could you give it again, please?
Michael O'Mera, eighteen oh nine Clark Street, Stevens Point, Wisconsin.
Thank you, sir. And uh, last one, Robin Rothfetter, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alders. Robin Rothfetter, 1640 Ellis Street. I also want to speak in favor of the recommendation made by Director Badun. And just acknowledging that this is a difficult situation with really constrained options. So my first observation is just there are significant downsides if we do not move ahead with this project. In addition to the ones that have been mentioned by Director Badun, you know, the possibility that we end up bearing the full project costs in the future anyway. There's also the possibility of signaling to this and other granting agencies that our municipality is a high-risk investment. So I think we can all recognize that failure to utilize granted funds could make us less competitive for future awards. My second observation is that bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure is a quality of life investment that is increasingly important in our current and post-COVID world. I think folks need safe, accessible opportunities for active outdoor transportation recreation now more than ever. And my third observation is that people in our community are really enthusiastically supportive of these types of opportunities. Last month, the graduating seniors in my natural resource planning capstone course at Stevens Point presented their final projects to the community. They covered a wide range of housing and transportation issues and and by far the most popular concepts that I received the most feedback and the most positive stakeholder feedback about were those involving active multimodal transportation exactly as envisioned in the tap grant. So for all of those reasons, I encourage you to vote in favor of Director Bedin's recommendations. I think we have more to gain if we complete this project and more to lose if we do not. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Director Knosky, you wanted to make some comments. You have to take yourself off of mute, though.
It's a rookie mistake. Yeah, I don't have anything substantial to add outside of what's already been presented. But I I think that as we talk about sustainability of the community, as we talk about walkability and bikeability and what makes Stevens Point a attractive place for people and families to locate or relocate or come back to, or however you want to phrase it, bicycle infrastructure is is one of the most critical components of that. And it's really important as the younger generations shift from commuting to more more vehicular commuting to more bicycle or pedestrian style commuting. And so I just, as a as a director and and as the the city's principal planner, fully supported and thankful that that we're having this discussion. Also, as a private resident and an often user of Prentice Street and the sharos that were installed on there, I believe last year now, there's some real benefits to to what what's being proposed here within this program itself. So very, very supportive of it as a director and as a private citizen of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Speaker's list is exhausted. Before we move it back to council, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Kay Brown, I see you taking yourself off of mute. I don't know who that is. Do you have a comment? Kay Brown? No? Okay, then I'm going to put you back on mute. And I see no other members of the public in the chat room or visually. So then we will move to the Alders, Alder Leek, and then Alder Fishler, and then Alder Shore.
Hi, thanks. Yeah, I might have been a little premature on on putting my hat in the ring. But yeah, I'd just like to add that I think it's vitally important that we maintain our credit with, so to speak, with external funding agencies. And so I I would like to support this. And, you know, just when it comes down to the dollars of it, I mean, yes, it's some extra money for us, but I think that maintaining of our credit with those those agencies is really important. And also I support the, you know, the the grant in general. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Fishler.
Hi, I support this tap grant as well. And I did also have a question for Director Badun. How much were the design fees that we would have to pay back?
Let me calculate quickly, it'd be 80% of about just shy of $60,000.
I know that maybe 60,000 isn't a lot compared to 200,000, but isn't it better maybe to get something rather than nothing and having to pay something back to get it, you know, with the grant that we won? I think it's really important to not lose credibility as well. So that's my thought on that.
Thank you. And Director, just to prepare you because the question might come up. We would have the ability to paint it ourselves with the latex, assuming we have to repaint it every couple of years because it won't last as long as the epoxy. Have you given any thought to what that additional cost would be? And so what I'm getting at is, over the course of, let's say, one lifespan, and let's say epoxy is seven years, if we have to repaint it three times over those seven years, plus pay back the $60,000, are we still less than the $226,000 with time and material? And you can formulate that answer while I go to Alder Person Shore.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to put a motion on the floor to approve the contract bid. So much has already been said. There's probably not much for me to add and I'll save any comments in case I need to make them later, except for one thing, and that is a suggestion that perhaps Professor Rothfeder, if possible, in some way to his students, collect a commitment or at least expression of interest in staying in Stevens Point after graduation. Just, just a thought.
All right.
I'll second that.
We're still here.
Hang on, hang on. You'll need to maintain some decorum. That was a good one. Alder Jennings and then President Johnson.
I'm seconding it.
Oh, second, okay. Alder Jennings seconds. President Johnson, was that a second or did you have a comment?
I just had a comment. Everything many people know, I love biking the circle. I love biking Stevens Point. And recently I met Larry and Nancy from Forest Junction, which is over the other side of the in between Manitowoc and and Appleton. And they were asking directions to a place to get some water. They had run out. Then I said, is this your first time? And they said, oh, no, we come here all the time. And I said, so you drive past Appleton, which has great bike infrastructure, and you come to Stevens Point? Oh, yeah, it's just a great biking city. So Larry and Nancy, retired farmer and retired nurse, I'm just sharing it because it was just such a lovely conversation. They had such a great thing to say about our community, and I think they're going to come back over and over, and they're not the only ones because we're going to be doing things like this. So it's just a good story.
Thank you, Alder. President Johnson, rather.
Can I speak? This is Alder Slownski.
Yes, sir.
And I I know I'm probably going to be in the minority like I've been lately. I I just can't understand, where do we stop? I have I have a section of streets in my district that I've been requesting to have fixed in the Stevens Point Industrial Park, Coy Drive, Borham. That road is absolutely horrible. I was back through there this last weekend. Again, it is so full of potholes, and I keep getting told we don't have the money. We can't do it. Now granted, it is it isn't the five-year plan. Where do we stop here? I mean, we keep commenting on, you know, Alder, President Johnson just made the comment. People love coming here because we have such a wonderful area for biking and pedestrian. We do. I use the green circle all the time. And and the comment that was made about during this epidemic, you know, there's a lot more people out and about. Absolutely, I agree. I've been out on, I have never seen so many people out on that green circle in these last three months. We have beautiful facilities, but we need to prioritize here. I I really, really ask my fellow Alders to really take a step back and think about this. We're elected to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. And yes, we also are to make a a wonderful city to live in, which I strongly believe we do. I I just don't get this. Where do we stop? What if this came in at 400,000? It just seems like there's no, there's no limit. It's just whatever it takes, let's do it. I I'm just, I'm just, I cannot believe this is happening. And I would hope that my fellow Alders think about the taxpayers in this city and being good stewards for their money. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Morrow.
I have a comment on where is the extra money going to be able to, where are we going to find the the extra $300,000? I mean, just like Jeremy, I use the green circle. My my son and I use it. I've never seen a bid that's gone double what we asked for. I mean, what 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 we initially thought it was. And I know when we end up talking to Cory, it's always, we don't have money for this and this and this. This is an extra $300,000. Says up to up to 316,000 over. If Cory could answer, where are we going to find that extra money that we didn't think we were going to have, that we were going to have to use?
Sure. Comptroller, I know you went over this already, but could you reiterate where the additional funds would come from?
Sure. So what we would do is we do have reserves. And typically what we do with reserves is if we have additional money in terms of additional reserves or additional fund balance, what we'll do is we'll put that into capital. So basically, what I would suggest is for now, we take it out of out of fund balance, which is basically our savings account, and then that will affect basically how much money and fund balance that we're able to put into capital for 2021. Now, I can't really, at this point, I can't really say, okay, what that number would be under either scenario as far as in September, how much money are we going to have to put into capital from our savings? Just because, of course, 2020 is anything but a typical year. So I think we're still kind of trying to figure out exactly how the budget is going to develop throughout the year. But big picture, for 2019, we did have a good year. It did increase the level of our savings, mainly because we had some revenues that came in much higher than than budgeted. So for 2019, we had this increase in savings. And then for 2020, of course, we have a lot of factors kind of working against us for 2020 that are going to take that savings back down. And the overall goal is to have stability in our savings to be around the range that we have as far as the amount of savings that we have as a percentage of our overall budget.
Thank you. Director, have I given you enough time? I know that was a pretty complicated question. And that's not talking about even the the time away that those crews will have from doing other city projects. My point was that it's going to cost significantly more to do it ourselves with the the projects that we'll have to put on hold. But do you have a ballpark?
I won't give any indication of what the level of of confidence is in this number, but throwing some things together really quick, we'd probably be at the somewhere between 70 and $90,000.
Okay, plus the 60 that we'd have to pay back. And we'd be pulling our crews off of projects that they otherwise would be doing. We don't have anybody sitting around doing nothing, as several people spoke. We've got projects stacked up that we would, we would have to then put on hold by not having someone else do this. I know that this is a significant amount of money. We have a savings account. That's what it's for. The the community has made a commitment to doing this. And I am just as upset as everybody about the significant increase. A couple of corrections in regards to Alder Morrow's comments. It didn't double. It was it was up by about 50% with the estimate, throwing contingencies, and we're we're pushing the $300,000 mark. But I just wanted to make sure we didn't over-exaggerate some of those dollar amounts. Alder Shore, you had another comment?
No, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a point in response to the discussion of the Green Circle Trail. Just because I think there's an important distinction we need to keep track of, and that's between recreation and transportation. So there are pieces of the Green Circle Trail that are used for getting from one place to another, commuting or or, you know, just trips. But a great deal of the Green Circle is really much more for recreation than for transportation. And I remember when our community was looked at shortly after the tap grant, it was that lack of transportation routes that kind of was the was the key point. And that's where, for me, anyway, the the point isn't as much about how much more people are out and around right now during COVID-19. But more of that point about what we know about the next generation. There's been a drop in in driving from the previous generation to the the rising generation. It's just like never been seen before in terms of change in in driving habits. And so while I realize I made a cheap, I went for the cheap laugh with regard to the students in the class. There's a serious point there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Alder Nibone.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. It seems to me, as other folks have said, what brings people to this community and what keeps people in this community is the quality of life. And biking is a big part of that quality of life. I think in terms of being a good steward of taxpayer dollars, the potential money we could lose by defaulting on a federal grant is probably worth far more than the couple hundred thousand extra we're going to have to pay for this. I think to default on this grant would be extremely foolish. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to be clear, we're not defaulting on the grant. We're not talking about defaulting on it. We had talked about internally the possibility of diverting this tap grant to another project, similar to what we did with the original Division Street proposal, and we diverted those funds to the the bridge, the overpass on Hoover. The Director and I quickly ruled that out. There's just not enough time to to put something together. I know we are looking at extending part of the Green Circle Trail that we might have been able to use it, but that would not work. So we would be potentially jeopardizing our standing in future years in regards to that tap grant. I'm sorry, those were S T P urban funds. I understand that, but the same process.
Can I make another comment, Alder? Or I'm sorry.
Alder Slownski, absolutely.
And I I hate to bring this old subject up again. But this whole discussion, this whole Stanley Street, restriping that, because we needed to get that restrap because we have all these people that want to use that corridor on their bikes and pedestrians and but yet I've spoken with two businesses that are that see this every day. And there is no increase in traffic, bike traffic. Yes, has it calmed the road? I guess, yeah, that could be an argument. But here, we're talking about, Alder Shore had just made the comment about the Green Circle trail being a recreational means and these these painting of these bike lanes on our city streets are more of a destination. But I don't, we don't see it. It's not been proven. So again, I don't know if we're trying to get this warm, fuzzy feeling that, oh, we need to put these these stripes on the road because hopefully maybe me people are going to start using them more. I I just don't buy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Back to Alder Jennings.
I just want to reiterate a old argument. Stanley Street was not restripped for bike lanes. Stanley Street was not restripped for bike lanes. It was a lane reduction to slow traffic, calm traffic, create a neighborhood street in a neighborhood. It was not for bike lanes. Bike lanes were placed in the excess road area created by the four to three lane conversion. Had parking been needed, we would have added parking. Had turns lanes been added or needed, they might have been turn lanes. That's what four to three lane That's what four to three lane conversions do. They create excess space that gets used for other things. Bike lanes were the best option there, but that was not the reason. Thank you.
Can I, can I comment, Mayor?
Sure, but I don't want to get into a debate regarding Stanley Street. I think we beat that horse.
I just want to, I, I just want to thank Alder Jennings for validating my argument that. So basically you're telling me that these Stanley Street, the painting of a Stanley Street had nothing to do with servicing more bikes. Thank you for validating that for me.
Thank you. Any other comments?
This is Alder Zarazua.
Yes.
Sorry, I had to turn my video off. Um, so I just want to say thank you for whoever made the distinction of, you know, we are looking at basically creating infrastructure for bikes. And younger, the younger generation is not getting their driver's licenses at the same rate that they did twenty years ago. So this isn't a matter of, you know, we're, we're trying to, you know, make people ride bikes. It's that we're trying to make sure we have the support for people to drive a car or ride a bike. And they're, they're both important in our society. And obviously it's healthier for our city if we can promote more people riding bikes whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I see no additional comments. So the motion is to approve the um, project and award it to Century Fence out of Pewaki in an amount not to exceed six hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-two cents. If you are in favor, you will vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no. And the clerk will call that roll.
Morrow?
No.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Two, that motion is adopted. Item number seventeen is on page ninety of your packet. That's a resolution to temporarily change District One's polling location. Clerk, Kirk Kramer, do you have anything to add?
Um, this is a result of just the location and the residents of being the high right, at the high rise. Um, and they just want to keep that population in the building safe. And so we are just temporarily relocating uh, the voting location to Mid State Technical College for August and November.
Okay, so the, basically for the end of the rest of 2020, District One's polling location will be at Mid State Technical College. Part of the reason we're doing this one and the next one is to make sure that voters have ample time to uh, prepare and understand where they're voting. Uh, the same is true with early voting locations. We have two of those. Uh, we want to avoid the cluster that was the spring elections in regards to where you can, what you can do, what you can do, and, and all this other stuff that was going on. It confused the heck out of voters. We need uh, solid information and we need to get it out there early so the voters understand what they have as options in regards to voting. Any discussion on the polling location for District One? Not, I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
I move to accept the resolution.
Motion by Leek, seconded by Johnson. Discussion? Seeing none, clerk, would you please call that roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Unanimous consent, that is adopted. Next item is item number eighteen on page ninety-one of your packets. And that's an ordinance amendment regarding Chapter Fifteen's polling locations, uh, fifteen point zero three, sub ten, moving the polling location for District Ten. Clerk, anything to add there?
Um, again, this is a direct result of uh, COVID nineteen and um, the keeping the population safe at the Portage Coney Health Center. Um, we moved to the Ruth Guilfree Center for the April election. And um, in talking with Director Shabelski, um, he felt that it was uh, best to just uh, make that a permanent change. So that's what we, that's what we propose.
Thank you. Um, Alder Fishler, District Ten?
I move to approve the polling location for District Ten.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Person Morrow. Discussion there? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Let's see to somebody.
That was Alder Morrow.
Yep.
All right, so unanimous consent, that one is adopted. Item number nineteen is uh, on page ninety-two of your packet. And that is a, a City of Stevens Point media relations policy. This came through us, to us from President Johnson. President Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um, I would like to propose a slight amendment or a change here. Um, as I look at this and I, I, so I apologize for not catching this sooner. And I think I had talked with the attorney about this. The public information officer is kind of a formal term and we use that with our emergency operations plan. And that has a separate meaning. This is, um, I, the, the term that should have been used and should have been crafted for this originally in my, my era is media relations officer. Um, so wherever there's the public information officer, PIO, I would first like to make a motion to approve it, but amend that, that phrase.
Okay, so we would remove public information and replace it with media relation. And that would be reflected on the acronym PIO to make it MRO.
MRO, that is correct.
That is, uh, so we have a motion to approve as amended. Is there a second? Seconded by Fishler. Discussion there? Seeing none, I'm just going to make a comment. This really puts into writing uh, what we've been practicing within the city. Uh, just kind of affirming that in a written form, which we didn't have before. Okay, uh, we have a motion to approve as amended and it's been seconded by Alder Fishler. Seeing no further discussion, clerk, would you please call that roll?
Jennings?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Niebon?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Morrow?
Aye.
Unanimous consent, that is adopted. We'll get an amended version out uh, to get signed into our policy tomorrow. Item number twenty is on page ninety-three of your packets. That is an ordinance amendment, Chapter sixteen point one-two, the central business district sidewalk cafe licenses. This one's fairly straightforward. It removes the fencing requirement on our cafe licensees. And we have Trevor Rourke who wished to speak. Trevor?
This is Alder Zarazua. Trevor had to leave the meeting, but he wanted to express his support of this item.
Thank you. And I assume that the next two items are the same?
Correct.
Expressing support?
Yes.
Item registered to, to speak. So, okay. Alder Persons, the motion uh, or the resolution before you would lift the, or the ordinance amendment before you would lift the fencing requirement for that sidewalk cafe license. Alder Jennings?
Uh, I was going to move to approve, but I saw President Johnson, I think, beat me to it, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just second it. How does that sound?
We'll, we'll give the motion to Alder Jennings, the second to President Johnson. Discussion?
Public comment?
Yep. Bob, Bob Ware, your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes, sir.
Bob Ware, seven twenty-seven, Second Street. This goes back quite a ways. Uh, at the time that the public, the sidewalk cafes were created, I believe Director Lemke was the director of Public Works at the time. And there's two people on the council, at the council meeting now, who I believe were Alder Persons at the time. There was considerable uh, discussion about the fencing. And the rationale for putting up the fencing was basically to keep those individuals who were consuming alcoholic beverages as an extension of premises in the, on the sidewalk from roaming from Tavern A's venue to Tab- Tavern C, walking up and down the street and saying, well, I bought this Bud Light down here and I just had to talk to my buddy up here. And uh, there was, there was a lot of concern about uh, alcoholic beverages in the, in the right of way here in the, in the street. Now, this ties obviously to items number twenty-one and twenty-two also in your agenda tonight. Uh, if the desire is to allow people to roam from sidewalk cafe A to sidewalk cafe C to sidewalk cafe D and back, we're going to take out the fences. But the rationale for putting in those fences, and I'd like uh, possibly Director uh, Lemke to make some comments on this or at least confirm what I'm saying. And also you, Mr. Mayor, and I believe Alderman Slawinski was on the council at the time. That was the big, it was a big discussion. And that was the rationale for those fences. If now, you know, we have a change in council, obviously, we have a change in membership. If the desire of the current council is to allow the, regardless of what you discuss on item number twenty-one and twenty-two, if the desire is to allow people to walk up and down the sidewalk between venues, then go ahead and approve it. But I think that you're opening a bottle of beer on the sidewalk is basically what I'm saying. That's my comments for item number twenty. I will have some comments for twenty-one and twenty-two.
Thank you. And right at the three minute mark too. Thank you. Oh, now I gotta stop it. There we go. Um, okay, any other comments in regards to the licensing? I'm sorry, that's the licensing, the ordinance amendment repealing the fencing. I don't see anyone. I will briefly then take a moment to address uh, Mr. Ware's comments. I was on council at the time. That was one of our concerns, the passing of alcohol through the fence uh, or through the, the area without having some sort of barrier there was a concern. An extension of premise is defined and that um, the, the area that they can serve in is defined in our statutes, or in our ordinances rather, that would still not be allowed. You would not be able to, unless they were contiguous in some shape, and I don't know that any of them are, um, you would not be able to walk from one business who has cafe seating to the next business if there was a gap in between. That's not how this works. Uh, that fence was a boundary. And I think the times have changed enough where we can try it without that boundary. Uh, and that's what we're looking at here today. Let's see. Uh, I got a comment here from Troy Hanaki. It says, I see that leaving the patio furniture out overnight did not make the draft. Is that still possible excluding Fridays and Saturdays? Uh, so that would require a different change in the ordinance. Um, I don't think it was anyone's intention to be able to leave furniture and things out overnight. Uh, that wasn't one of the things that we had discussed. But that is certainly, if you'd like to speak to that, Troy, um, you have three minutes as well, just like any other person would. Uh, and we would allow that. Is that something you wish to do?
Okay. Hello?
Yep, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, yeah, Troy Hanatsky, uh, nine twelve Main Street, Stevens Point, Wisconsin is my business. I own Graffiti Sports Pub. Uh, so uh, the draft ordinance that was presented by staff, um, yeah, there may have not have been a longer discussion, maybe in detail about leaving the furniture out. Um, if there's a potential of that being included into the draft, could work pretty well. Um, as far as the amount of seating that, uh, and resources that we need to put out and space and uh, staff time to pull stuff in and out on a day-to-day basis. Um, it would be a scenario where you would have a cabling system. You cable the legs of tables and chairs through and through, through all your pieces. And uh, to keep, uh, you know, if somebody wanted to steal a chair or somebody to throw a chair, they'd have to throw the whole, the whole rack of chairs, including tables. So it would be a potential request that, that could be included in the draft ordinance change. Um, if council sees fit, um, it'd be a, a great help to uh, uh, enhance the downtown aesthetics as well as enhance the availability of the shop owners, um, cafes and restaurants and uh, taverns to get the cafe license to be, to be used. Uh, Mayor Wiesa asked me a while back, uh, how come the space isn't getting used enough? Uh, or the cafe licenses aren't getting used enough? Um, whilst it was simply put forward, and that's kind of how we got to this spot today, was just that the time and effort it takes to put all this stuff in and out, and especially the fencing, um, it's just, it's kind of hindrance and uh, the counter, counterproductive to creating that environment. So the question, I guess it would be, yes, if we could somehow include the furniture, maybe to exclude Friday and Saturday nights. Um, if we're sitting here reinventing uh, this particular part of the ordinance, it might be a good time to address this and make it a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Attorney Beverage to chime in. Um, it would appear since we proposed an ordinance that takes out only the sidewalk cafe fencing requirements, uh, would it be appropriate to consider an additional amendment uh, allowing that the, the furniture, for example, would be allowed to stay out overnight?
Yeah, I don't think that would be problematic. Uh, the sidewalk cafe ordinance in general is a, a specific enough topic that I think that this would allow for, you know, slightly different uh, language to be approved as opposed to verbatim what was on the agenda. So that's, that's fine.
Thank you. I would then ask the Chief of Police, uh, Tom Zenter to chime in in regards to any concerns. I know this is very, very last minute, uh, but we don't have another meeting until the council meets July twentieth. Uh, would the police department have concerns if uh, furniture were allowed to stay outside during certain nights of the week, let's say, Sunday through Thursday?
I can't see any reason why that would be an issue other than, you know, potential. But as, as we're talking about chaining them down and securing them, uh, that'd be the only requirement so they don't end up in the middle of the street later on that evening.
Okay. Uh, Alder Jennings, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, well, unfortunately I supported this before and now you just lost my vote because this came in last minute. This is not, um, we have not had enough time to think about this or look at what other cities do. And um,
Alder Jennings, I need to be clear, th- there's not a motion to allow that. I was just making sure that if the discussion went that way, we could. Because if it wouldn't be allowed, it wouldn't make sense to talk about that any further. Um, so keep that in mind as you speak, please.
Well, it, it sounds like we're moving towards rolling that into this agenda item. And then, and I guess if we do, I, you've just lost my vote, so.
Okay. So nobody has made that motion to amend that? I just wanted to be certain that we could talk about it and that the police department wouldn't be opposed to it. So nobody has brought that motion forward to amend that? We are only discussing- We are only discussing the ordinance amendment as presented at this point. Alder Morrow?
I like, I like the amendment as it is now. It has limited hours, so we're not, I, so there's no concern of it going through like possibly bar close time?
Alder Person, I want to make sure that you understand that this is removing the fencing. There are no time limits on it. That would be removing that fencing requirement at all times.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Zarazua? You gotta unmute.
Okay, so if the, so the sidewalk cafes would be able to be on the square?
No, this is not changing any of the boundaries.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and I think we're getting things confused because I know we're working towards a bunch of solutions. I saw that Robin Rothfetter sent a comment to me that this is an important opportunity to promote local economic activities in a way that minimizes risks of pandemic transmission. The same applies to item twenty-one and twenty-two. What we are trying to do is, is relax some of the laws to allow a little more flexibility for the businesses. This one would only apply to the businesses that have a cafe, sidewalk cafe license. There are a few, and I don't want to throw a bunch of names out there, but there are a few downtown, and they are allowed to serve in that area with the cafe license only during certain hours. Ryan, you might have to help me out with the times, but I think it's only till nine o'clock.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so it would open it up for all hours that the ordinance currently allows. We're not changing anything else in the sidewalk cafe license ordinances at this point. We are only looking at currently moving, removing the fencing requirements. Okay. Oh, I just got a comment from Troy that says eleven PM is now, is now law. And, and I have to go with those who may know better than me. I don't have a sidewalk cafe. It's been a while since I looked at the time of the ordinance, but I know there is a restriction on time. It doesn't allow for twenty-four seven. Okay, any other comments relating to this ordinance that is being proposed? Seeing no one else wishing to speak. What are your wishes? Oh, Carlin, do we have a motion already? Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the ordinance as proposed. Any further discussion there? Alder Morrow, final comment?
No, I, I just wanted to second, I just wanted to second it.
Okay, no, we've already got that. And we've got confirmation from the Director of Economic Development that eleven PM is the correct stop time. You are in favor of the motion as presented? Vote yes. If you are opposed, you will vote no, and clerk will please call the roll.
Morrow?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Nibon?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Shore?
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Okay, ten zero.
Thank you. That was unanimously approved. Clerk, I'm going to ask you for some clarification. These ordinances do not take effect tomorrow. They take effect after publication, correct?
Correct.
And that is when?
We work on them immediately, so I will have Marissa do that tomorrow and get that done as soon as possible.
Okay, so the publication is typically when? I'm guessing, I'm asking because there are businesses that are on this meeting and will, it will apply for the next couple of items. So they need to know that they can't start right away, but we need to know when they would be able to start.
Hey, Mayor, is Marissa?
Yes, Marissa, thank you.
It will be published on Friday or in...
Friday. So they would take effect then on Saturday, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just think, I just want to make sure that the businesses that are listening know that they can't immediately start this. So we're doing this as quickly as possible. All right, item number twenty-one on page ninety-four of your packet is a resolution relaxing the open intoxicants ordinance on specific days in the downtown area. This came as part of a discussion that we've been having with some of the downtown businesses as well as some of the alders. I want to point out that a map proposal was included in the packet. I came up with the map, and I want to explain the logic there. The map, as you see it, allows for all of the downtown businesses that serve food and alcohol to be included in that area, so we're not excluding anyone in the downtown area. And it also allows for legal passage to get to some of our parkland. Because right now, if you allowed it, let's say hypothetically on the square, you wouldn't be able to walk across the street to Pifner Pioneer Park with your burger and beer to enjoy a dinner. This is by no means a recommendation. This is just an outline. We needed a starting point. I didn't feel we got a lot of guidance from, from council on how we wanted to do this in regards to times and days of the week. There was some discussion, but nothing concrete. And the map is, again, just a proposal. It goes as far north as the Cobblestone, which has the grill, the chop house, Wasota Chop House. So it would include them. It goes as far east as, let's call it Guzan, Maine. I think that's the furthest east. South, it would cover the Clark Street businesses that serve food and alcohol, including Father Fats and Chef's Kitchen, as well as down Third Street for Ruby Cafe, inclusive of the bars and restaurants on the square. And going as far east, I think the, the last, I'm sorry, west, the last place that probably serves food, I believe, is probably Urbert's and Gerbert's. But again, it's, goes south to Water Street to allow people to walk down to the riverfront where we've installed some picnic tables and benches, and then across to Pifner Pioneer Park to allow that, because I know that was part of the discussion. So again, not a recommendation, only a starting point. If we want to change that, we can. I would urge us to consider, I know there was some discussion in regards to no one wants to be drinking behind buildings or alleyways, but if we make the area too complicated, the police department is going to have a very difficult time enforcing it. I've got some designs worked up already in anticipation of this, so we can post the area so the public knows where you can no longer keep your open intoxicant. But if we make it too zigzaggy, it's going to be confusing for the users, and I just want to be cautious about that. The hours proposed and the times proposed are all subject to the council's consideration. I know that we've talked from everything from all days of the week to only Wednesday and Thursday nights, excluding the weekends. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday certainly would be appropriate. There was also some discussion about going downtown to have lunch and having an alcoholic beverage as well as dinner. So there was, you know, anywhere from eleven AM to nine PM was discussed. What you see before you is only a recommendation, or I'm sorry, only options. We don't have a recommendation as far as that goes, so the map, the hours, the days, those are all open for discussion to give us our final product. With that, let's see, we'll start with Alder Jennings, and then we'll go to President Johnson.
Regarding the map, I, I would like to start with, I'll eventually make a motion to amend that, and I do want to thank staff and mayor and the mayor for working very rapidly on all of this. I know everyone is trying to, to make accommodations very quickly. And we've, we've made it clear that we want to give this as a trial. And I think we all feel, or most of us feel like not going gung ho on everything. So my recommendation to revise the map is it sidewalks, fronting businesses on Clark and Maine. It includes the square and then the crossing that goes to Chase Bank. In terms of, for example, the hotel, the, the next item for parking lots and parklets allows, would accommodate those types of places. I am very concerned about the scope of this and how it will be impossible for PD to do enforcement and see people, and it's creating not a comfortable environment for families to come down, but actually one that will be uncomfortable. So the, when, I guess we'll have a discussion first, but I will be putting forward an amendment to this ordinance before we get to the ordinance itself.
Thank you, Alder. And just so I understand, you said sidewalks on Clark Street and Main Street, including the square and area in the crossing to allow it to be carried over into Pifner Pioneer Park, is that correct?
That's correct. And the other, just to reiterate, the other places are accommodated by the parklet and parking lot. Agenda item next.
Okay, so nothing on Third Street, Strong's Avenue, or Second Street, is that correct?
Oh, sorry, you can include Strong's, that's fine.
Okay, so sidewalks on both sides of Strong's?
Yes, please.
Okay, and this isn't a motion yet, I understand that. I'm just trying to get a handle on it, and I know that Chief Zenter is listening, so they can talk about the potential of enforcement. One thing that I forgot to bring up, and I think it's important enough where it should be an amendment right away, is that in talking with a couple of people, including the Acting Chief of Police, we would like to change the, the wording now, and it says, this exception shall not apply to glass containers. We would like it to state that it would only apply to plastic containers. So you would not be allowed to have any glass or cans. Cans came up because we, clearly, the intent of this is not to have someone go somewhere, buy a twelve-pack, and sit downtown and watch the fountain. We want to encourage them to be shopping at those local businesses, not encouraging drinking without food, but give people the opportunity if they want to have a drink with their lunch or dinner that they would be able to do that. So I would ask that one of our alders make a motion to amend right now saying that the ordinance would only apply to plastic containers. And Attorney Beverage, if there's a specific wording that you'd like me to use, feel free to chime in.
No, no magic words.
Generally understandable language.
Right, so the, the ordinance would apply only to plastic containers. Do I have someone who would be able to make that motion? President Johnson?
Leek here, so. Oh, okay.
Oh, if Alder Leek wishes to do that, that's fine.
We'll give it the motion to Alder Leek, then. Johnson will have a second. So there is a message from Kathy Johnson, who's one of the owners of Sunset Point Winery. It says to everyone, guests, to be able to go from Cobblestone to downtown would be a great opportunity. As presented, that would, that would be allowed. Any other discussion or any other amendments?
May I have, I just have to back up to what I said before. Strong's, it, the sidewalks there are not wide enough on either side. And the restaurant already has outdoor seating.
When you say wide enough, what do you mean?
There needs to be five feet.
No, there doesn't. This is only applying to open intoxicants. This isn't applying to cafe licensing.
Okay, got it. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Alder Fishler?
I was just curious if the PD worked with you directly to work out this map and what the recommendations were.
So to answer your question, I came up with the map after my logic, as I explained. Trying to get all of the restaurants and people who served alcohol in there and allow them to, as the council wanted to, go to Water Street Park Frontage or the Pifner Pioneer Park. After the map was created, I did send it out and asked for input, but I'll at least let Chief Zenter speak to that.
That'd be one concern that we have, looking at the map as it stands now, would be difficult for consistency in law enforcement purposes where, you know, really, depending on what side of a street on or a corner, one area would be in violation of the ordinance, one you'd be fine. We'd really, I guess, what I would be looking at would be more of a rectangular area, not so many twists and turns. More of a more defined boundary, I would say, would be more appropriate.
Thank you, Chief. I do want to point out and reiterate again that this is not a proposal or a recommendation. It's, it's an option. It's a starting point. One thing that I would point out is that drinking on private property would still be prohibited. So for example, the alley by the library, it would still not be allowed because it's private property, not public. This would only constitute the public property, the things that we have control over, unless that business allowed it. So unless the property owner there would allow it, it still would not be allowed on private property. The alley in the Downtown Plaza, for example, privately owned. They would not allow drinking there unless the owner would allow that. The same thing would hold true. I think there's an alley between, it's on the north side of the square, what used to be, I think Jim Lobbs owns the building, but there's an alley there that, again, it would still be prohibited on private property unless that owner allowed it. Okay, any other comments?
I was gonna say, we have a motion on the plastic, though, right? I'm just point of order, point of order here, so.
Right, right. So we did get off topic there a little bit.
Yep, thank you.
The motion is to change the wording in the last line of the ordinance to, this ordinance will only apply to plastic containers. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I think we can do a voice vote there. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any, are there any opposed? Hearing none opposed, the amendment passes. We are back to the ordinance now as amended. President Johnson?
Okay, it's a res, it's a resolution, not an ordinance, right?
Oh, you're right, you're right. I'm sorry. I apologize for that. That's my fault. We had originally talked about an ordinance amendment. The city attorney discovered that we didn't need an ordinance amendment because our ordinance already allowed for the council to take action on this. It is a resolution. I apologize for using the wrong words.
It's, oh, fine. Yeah, I just needed to keep that straight in my head because, yeah.
It did get a little confusing. We had originally talked about the ordinance, but this is not necessary.
So now I would like to address the timeframe, if I may?
Absolutely.
So I, in, in the discussions, and there were a number of them with the downtown businesses and a number of other groups that have been a part of this, we did talk about the twelve PM to nine PM to try and capture that lunch crowd. So I, I do think that that should be twelve PM to nine PM for the Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And I, I like that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it's a good, let's try this. We're doing it by resolution. We're not changing the ordinance. So I guess I would make a motion to amend the resolution from four PM to twelve PM, so.
So noon?
Noon, yep, noon, not, not midnight.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the resolution to go from noon till nine PM.
Seconded.
Seconded by Zarazua. Discussion there? Chief Zenter, anything to add in regards to that?
Nope.
Okay. Any further discussion? Public comments?
Public comment.
Bob Ware, go ahead, you have the floor.
Bob Ware, seven twenty-seven Second Street again. Those of us who have been around the city for a while, yourself included, know that, and I'm sure Chief Zenter will recall about the time when he was hired, the most problems that they've had down in the square with alcohol has been primarily Thursday night and Friday night. It runs into the weekend also. But Thursday night and Friday night, while the university is in session, and I'm not picking on college kids, but that's what is, has occurred. So, you know, to, to clear at nine o'clock in the evening, to be able to clear that alcohol off... To be able to clear that alcohol off the square. Is going to take a significant. Portion of the PD, I believe. I don't know, possibly Chief Zener could comment on it. The Thursday and Friday nights are the big, big ones. Where they have happened in the past. Until they really started cracking down on, on. Consumption of alcohol in the right of way. That's it for now.
Thank you, Mr. Ware. Chief Center, I will ask again. Does the police department have any concerns with the amendment?
No, I do not. Just to answer, Bob, I do agree. It was looking back in 1994, even five years ago. It was a very different environment in the downtown area. Where we sit now, where we've progressed. I have no concerns during those timeframes or days that we've selected.
Thank you. The motion before you is to amend the resolution. To go from noon until 9:00 PM.
Mayor, I have a question.
Hang on, Alder Neebo, and then we'll go to Alder Jennings.
The only concern I have is that it goes till nine o'clock on Friday evening. I understand wanting to catch the, the noon crowd. On Fridays, and maybe even a Friday fish fry, but. Going into getting about nine o'clock at night on a Friday, you're starting to get in a late happy hour crowd that might be roaming around. I generally support the ordinance and will vote in favor, but the late time on Friday concerns me a little.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Jennings?
Yeah, I guess I need a little bit more explanation from the president as to why the, the noon. Are people going to be wandering around downtown at one, two, three o'clock in the afternoon? With a drink in their hand? I mean, we think about four o'clock. That's sort of after work. Sort of thing, I guess I'm.
Well, I guess you're assuming that it's a work crowd. What about the person who's got a vacation day and wants to go have a burger at Graffiti's? And, and, and a beer at, at noon because they're on vacation. So I think we're, we're trying to assign. Or tourists, you know, like Kathy Johnson has said, we're trying to assign. A construct that's in our brain rather than thinking broadly. So I know I've gone downtown at noon, had a burger and a beer. And in the past, before, you know, you had to wear masks before you went everywhere. So I don't think it's unusual for people to want to be able to go for an afternoon sandwich and a beverage.
Thank you. Any other comments? We're only talking about the amendment right now, and that goes from noon until 9:00 PM. It's the times. Any comments on that? Page two. Don't see any hands. Okay, the motion before you is to amend 4:00 PM to change it to read noon or 12:00 PM. If you are in favor, I think we can do this with a voice vote too. So I'd ask the alders to take their phones off of mute. And I will ask all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Sorry, I have to say no.
Okay. Any others opposed? I hear nine to one. The motion to amend is adopted. We are now looking at the resolution as amended. With the time and pertaining to only plastic containers. Things still on the floor would be the days of the week and the map. Alders Zarazua?
Just a question. You had mentioned that you're looking at ways of how to post the area. I think that would be a factor in helping law enforcement be able to know and for the customer, the public to know. If they're within those boundaries. So what kind of solutions are we looking at to, to mark that area well? Not permanently in cases, isn't, you know, this is.
Right.
Not a permanent recommendation at this time.
Here's what I've asked, because we have to have some sort of notification. So those tourists that come into town all week long know what the. Their, their boundaries are. The intent was to design signs that say pursuant to whatever ordinance. No open intoxicants past this point and use them on street signs. So because people probably won't be drinking in parking lots and things like that. Posting them on the streets, and we don't know how many signs we're gonna need yet because we don't know what the boundaries are gonna be. But the signs are being designed by our streets department, and Kenny Rosek has a machine there that prints off signs. I think they, they cost us probably between thirty and forty dollars a piece. And the intent was then to post the areas saying pursuant to the ordinance, no open intoxicants beyond this point. I know a couple of taverns already have that, so you don't take it outside. Send it to your question, Alder? Okay, any other comments? Is everyone generally okay with the Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? Okay, I see some acknowledgements of head nods. So I think we can probably take that one off the table. Alder Jennings, I know you had some concerns about the boundary. I'm trying to draw it on the fly here. Which, which isn't exactly conducive to getting it done, so. I'm gonna re-explain what I believe you mentioned, and that would be from. Both sides of Strong's Avenue. All of Main Street, including the square, extending through Water Street. With allowing that to go into the park. Once you're in the park, that's fine. We just need a way to get there. And then both sides of Clark Street, and that would include the square. But there's a segment of Second Street that runs on the north and south ends of the square that would not be included. Nor would anything on Third Street. And I know they've got, well, I guess I don't know where. Cozy's door, it's kind of on the corner, but I believe it's right on Third Street. Cozy Kitchen. It is on Third Street. The door of the Cozy Kitchen is on Third Street. I don't know that they serve alcohol, though. I don't think they do. But that would exclude places like Ruby and Cobblestone. Sunset Point Winery would be excluded there.
No.
Mayor, that doesn't exclude those places because they can use their parking lot.
Right, right. No, I meant exclude as in the open intoxicants ordinance. They would have to get an extension of premise. To use their parking lot, and that, that's acceptable. Anybody in the city can do that right now, but that's different than this resolution. So someone would not be able to get a, a glass of wine at Sunset Point Winery and then walk to Pifner Park. The same would be true for Ruby or Cobblestone. Those are the only ones that I see that are affected. But they would have, they would be able to have that outdoor seating, should they get an extension of premise to serve alcohol. President Johnson, I see confusion on your face.
Yeah, well, and, and I don't want to exclude Sunset Point. And I don't want to exclude Ruby either.
Okay.
I think, you know, they're, they're just off of downtown, but they're still part of downtown.
Okay. Alder Fischler, I know you had your hand up as well.
I was just going to ask how, what the easiest way for PD to manage that would be, and it looks like Assistant Chief Zener is.
Chief Center?
I can see. Easiest way to put in this. We're gonna build something such as, as this, I would ask to put a buffer in it. When we start looking at having offshoots, well, we want to have a channel that goes to Cobblestone or the winery or. Ruby's. It creates confusion, and it's difficult to consistently enforce this. It would be very hard to ask an officer. To issue a citation in an area where we have. I guess blind spots in the downtown area if. We make a decision to go towards this and there's a timeframe of it. I, my recommendation would be to extend that to make a bigger buffer area. To make it most consistent. So a person will know well by the definition that they're in an area. It's, I mean, if you're by one bar, you're walking towards another bar or a cafe. But you're gonna walk through an area where, well, that's kind of the no-go zone. That would be difficult to consistently, consistently enforce.
Let me ask you this, Chief. Based on the, the map that was included in the packet. What would you change? Or recommend changing?
If we're looking at going all the way over to Cobblestone, go all the way out to Center Point, really what else is in that area? Granted, we don't want individuals walking the cars with drinks. I get that point, but. That's a clear definition. There's nothing beyond Center Point going north where an individual would need. Or have an expectation to carry a drink. If we're looking at southbound, you have Ruby's. You know, that makes sense to extend down to that point, but Clark Street. You know, that's fine up to Strong's. I don't know of anything past. I can't think of anything past Strong's where there would be a need. There's in a restaurant or an eatery past that location. Use that as your boundary. But I guess the biggest one I'd say is North Point or going north, have Center Point be the exterior boundary.
Okay, so rather than the jogger on Cobblestone and then back down to Main Street on Third, you would just continue Strong's up to Center Point. Follow Center Point all the way to Water.
Correct. If that's what you're looking at to include Cobblestone into this.
Yes, sir.
That would be what I would recommend for an enforcement aspect.
Thank you very much. Alder Jennings?
Yeah, unfortunately, I was in favor of this initially and have been engaged in the conversations, but I'm withdrawing my support. This is, the 400 block in Wausau is a definitive area. Specific boundaries, and it's small enough to be monitored. The purpose in my mind of this was to create social environments. Now we just seem to be going back to the good old days of making downtown. A big club mall, and there are lots of businesses downtown. There are offices. There are highest in apartments downtown. And they are not in this conversation, and I'm really sure they don't want people walking all over the place with, with drinks. I've already heard. No. Concerns from my constituents, so I'm, under these conditions, I'm no longer in favor of this amendment.
I want to point out too that something the elders probably don't know is that I asked Director Krenowski to send out a letter to every single address. Within the proposed boundary or the boundary that's laid out in the map, and that was done. By great pains through his office of folding and stuffing envelopes. So I appreciate that, but. The, the addresses within this boundary on your map and 200 feet outside that boundary. Were all sent a letter in regards to the proposal and the meeting information. So anybody who wanted to chime in had the ability to at least have some notice. I know we're moving rather quickly on this. And that's why it was important that we get those letters out, so people didn't get blindsided necessarily. We have.
Could you note the comment by Mike Beacom?
Yep, and I'm just about to get there because we've got a couple other ones. It was a suggestion from Director Krenowski, talking about Second Street right of way to help connect with the square. That would help address some of the concerns with Sunset Point Winery. Mike Beacom says he received this letter in the, the letter this afternoon in the mail. I know they did go out late. But he did receive it. Mike, did you want to say anything in this regard as one of the property owners downtown?
No, I mean, as far as the timing of the letter, I get that, because a lot of times it is running late. To your point about private property, the fact is, is that police is not gonna be able to enforce that. So it's gonna be up, you know, for those corridors. That triangular corridor behind Troy's and behind Jim Lob's building. I think that that's a potential problem area, and the alleys are a potential problem area, because that's where people are gonna congregate. And I'm not gonna be able to, to manage that. And so, you know, I'm all for anything that's gonna help economic development downtown. But I think that this is gonna become something that's wide open. And, and I didn't speak up before. You know, I'd love to see some things that stimulate the lunch crowd, but most of those people that are downtown are, it's a working bunch until five. So, you know, I don't want to support one group to the detriment of another.
Thank you, Mike. We appreciate that. I also have a comment from Valerie Landowski. Maybe it's not Valerie that's on, but that's the name there. Louise Landowski, owner of 833 Clark Street, would like to speak. Louise, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Hi, Mike. Thank you.
Name and address.
Council members. I own 833 Clark Street Apartments. I've been a property owner there for 10 years. My property taxes are over $7,000 a year. We helped to bring. The Clark Street area up to snuff. We spent a lot of money and a lot of time, a lot of years. We haven't taken any money in any of the block grants. We funded ourselves. I do not want, it's high-end housing. I do not want drunks on my property. It would make it an unsafe place for my tenants. And my tenants are my family. We're doing what we can to bring Stevens Point. Back to what it needs to be, a safe community. With the recent protests nearby. The fountain in the downtown, the wonderful farmer's market. One of the things that I tell potential tenants is that it's a safe place. We have wonderful police coverage, and there are cameras on some of the taverns in the area. When I was a kid, I'm from Point, I'm 60. And when I was a kid, bar fights were very common in the downtown as were open intoxicants. My husband is also my age and didn't ever even go down to the square in the evenings. Because it wasn't safe. I went in a big crowd and we always had men near us, and we knew who could swing a pool cue. You know, it gets pretty wild out in the center there, and if you're offering open intoxicants anywhere in the downtown, I certainly don't want it on my block. We have a dance studio, residential, and a gift shop on the corner, you know. So that's what I feel about it.
Thank you. Louise, I'd like to ask you a question. Did you get the letter from the city as well?
Yes, I did.
When did you get that?
Friday.
You did, okay. Thank you. And it was, it was very short notice. I understand that, but in the interest of trying to be as open and transparent as we can, I thought it important that we get the.
We responded to it right away because it would be, one of my selling points is that it's a safe city. The police department used to be downtown, and they still kept a good eye on us, and. We feel comfortable having single women live there, single men. And so. Yeah, it would be an issue for me.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Kathy Johnson made a comment in the chat room. Says, we are looking for more entertainment district, not college kids who go out partying after 10:00 PM. We are not looking at making this, we are looking at making this a higher end shopping and entertainment, not drunks. Just like the ice rink that didn't bring blood and guts. All right, any other discussion? So right now, there are no amendments to the map that was included in the packet. You've heard from Alder Jennings, you've heard from Chief Zener. I'm looking for direction. President Johnson?
Well, based on what Chief Zener said, Assistant Chief Center said, Acting Chief Center. Is, is creating the, a set of all these little cutouts, creating the, the buffer area, which would take Strong's down to. Center Point and then back around. So I, I would make a, a motion to amend the map. According to the chief's recommendation.
Okay, so is there a second to that? Is that Alder Fischler? Yes, seconded by Alder Fischler. So to reiterate, the map that was included in your packet. We would extend Strong's Avenue past the Cobblestone Hotel to Center Point Drive, including the sidewalk all along Center Point. Till you turn south onto Water slash Second Street, and it would include the sidewalk on the east side. Of that Water slash Second Street to the boundary that I will say is that the stoplights at the mid-state. to the boundary that I will say is that the stoplights at the mid-state parking lot across the street from Sunset Point Winery. That is the amendment. And it's been seconded. Any discussion on the map amendment?
Just, uh, may I have just one comment? Again, this is a resolution. It is not an ordinance change. This is an experiment to see if we can generate additional interest in people coming downtown and and enjoying beverages and food outdoors rather than being indoors. If this does not work, it's by resolution. We can as quickly and easily change it by resolution.
Right. That is absolutely correct. Last call for comments. Alder Jennings? And then Alder Marl.
Just further concerns about this, we're sort of putting the cart before the horse because uh it should all be about, it should be about social spaces and uh we have no no one running um music or anything or live music. There's nothing in place, again, using Wausau as a comparison where it's driven by what creates social spaces where people can be together and drink responsibly. What the focus has become is is drinking. So again, I will be voting no on um on all of this moving forward.
Thank you, Alder Jennings. Alder Marl.
Um, as all as Alder Johnson states, I mean, this is a trial. And even in the ordinance, it ends on October eighteenth.
Sixteenth. But yes, this is a trial. And if we, uh, Alder, President Johnson is correct. If it turns out that two weeks from now, we thought, uh, we we find out it's a terrible idea, we have a special meeting and we change it back.
Correct.
Fix what's broke.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion on the map amendment? That's the only thing that's on the floor right now. Okay, I don't believe I see any discussion on the map amendment, so I'm gonna do a voice vote there uh to restate the motion. The motion is to amend the map, continuing this boundary at Strong's up to Center Point.
Alright.
Around Center Point. Oh, oh, Alder Leek, you're, you want to mute yourself? There we go. Um, again, continuing the boundary north on Strong's Avenue to Center Point, the sidewalk along Center Point, continuing west all the way down to the boundary where the stoplights are at Sunset Point Winery and the Michigan Avenue, or I'm sorry, Midstate Technical College entrance. That is the amendment that's proposed. If you are in favor of that, you will vote, uh, actually, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
I heard one dissenting vote. That gives me a nine to one. The motion to amend is adopted. We are back to the resolution as amended. To recap the amendments, it will only apply to plastic containers. The hours will be from noon until nine PM on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and shall be only in the zone identified as the i- in the amended map. Further discussion? Alder Nibone?
Well, again, it 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 just seems like going so late on a Friday night, but the fact that we can, if need be, call a special meeting and repeal this in a hurry if this goes south. Um I guess I'll, I would support it the way it is at this point.
Thank you. Just to be clear, in a hurry would mean that we would have to get a quorum of council and provide at least twenty-four hours' notice uh for that meeting. So it it would still take a couple of days. We wouldn't be able to do it at the drop of a hat. All right. Then if there's no other discussion on the resolution as amended, I would certainly entertain entertain a motion to approve the resolution or deny the resolution as amended. President Johnson?
Motion to approve as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second vote? Uh, we'll give the second to Zarazua. Uh, we appreciate it, Alder Leek, but you were a little slow on the draw. All right. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? Giving plenty of time. Again, restating the amendments. This would apply to only plastic containers from noon until nine PM on Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays through October sixteenth in the map provided with the amendment going to Center Point. Okay, if you're in favor of the motion, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will please call that roll.
Jennings?
No.
Sure.
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Leek? Alder Leek?
He had some background noise. He put himself on mute. Um Alder Leek? We need a vote, please. He may have stepped away, clerk. I would ask that you come back to him.
Okay. Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Marl?
Aye.
Alder Leek?
Ald- Alder Leek, last call. Okay. Because it appears he he may have stepped away or dropped off the call or some other technical difficulty, we will just show him as not voting.
Oh, I think we should wait.
Oh, wait. I just heard Alder Leek, are you there? He's back.
Yes, I'm back. Sorry. Yes, I, aye.
That is an aye.
Sorry, I I got kicked out. I got kicked out somehow.
Gotcha. Okay, um, I have a nine-one. Is that correct, clerk?
That is correct.
That resolution is adopted and will take effect after publication, uh, which means it would start Saturday. The um, and we'll we'll make sure that if there's any delays in that, we'll let everybody know as well. Item number twenty-two is an ordinance amendment of the Revised Municipal Code, Chapter eight point zero nine sub two sub F and sixteen point zero eight sub one regarding the use of public parking lots and street-side parking spaces for outdoor service, seating, and sales areas for local businesses. Uh, this is an extension of our parklet program allowing uh businesses who may not have any on-street parking on Main Street, which is currently allowed um places like Ruby Coffee, to use public parking spots as parklets. Director Kornowski, anything to add?
Uh, no, uh, not at this time, ou- ou- outside of, uh, I I well, I guess there's something to add then. So we, uh, how how it's laid out essentially is that, uh, Director Badun and I identified that within Chapter Eight, which I uh regulates public property, uh, including the use of municipal parking lots, we included parklets as part of that, and then we referenced Chapter sixteen uh, whi- which uh talks about uh essentially streets, alleys, and sidewalks. So we make it an allowed thing within the public uh properties chapter. We reference it back to Chapter sixteen, which further regulates it. There are additional administrative permits that are gonna have to be amended. But we can do that within uh my department as staff. Uh, and then as requested uh during the last meeting, uh, this is a sunset ordinance. It will uh terminate after one year uh from date of publication, uh, but could return to public protection uh upon request by essentially anyone, staff, uh, elected or business owners, things of that nature. So uh, staff recommends approval as presented.
All right. Any other comments? Discussion or a motion? Alder Jennings?
A motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, seconded by Alder Person Marl. Discussion there. Alder Nibone?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a quick question. Um uh, we didn't address the elimination of a handicap parking space as an allowable u- use of the parklet. Sometimes the handicap space is closest to the building.
And I I believe, I believe, Alder Person, that the state statutes in regards to handicap spots would circumvent uh or supersede our parklet ordinance. Um, I would let the city attorney address that, but we certainly would not allow a handicap spot to be used as a parklet.
Ma- Mayor, I could even address that.
But
Okay, so let's let Alder Nibone finish your question, and then we'll go to Director Kornowski.
I wouldn't be opposed to shifting the spots over a couple to allow the parklet to be closer as long as the spots aren't eliminated completely. And I don't know that we could do that either legally.
Director?
Yeah, so so within the actual application of the the parklet, um, again, I I apologize, it's not within the packet because it's something we can change administratively. It does identify that use of handicap stalls is prohibited uh at for any type of parklet. So um, we would not, as staff, administratively allow any use of a handicap stall. We would likely uh work towards finding alternative parking stalls, including, you know, if we have to shift things down, um, things of that nature. So we get a little bit more creative, a little bit more flexibility, but no, we uh are very cognizant of of ADA requirements uh and and allowing ADA accessibility to a- all residents.
Thank you. Anyone else? Don't see anybody. So the motion to approve has been seconded. If you're in favor, vote yes. If you're opposed, vote no, and the clerk will please call that roll.
Marl?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Leek? Alder Leek?
I believe he said aye. Um, I would ask him to unmute or send a message in the chat again.
Okay, got it. Nibone?
I think there was an aye.
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
Jennings?
Aye.
Okay.
Unanimous consent. That is approved. Again, that will not take place until um, it is published, which would be Saturday. However, I believe that anyone wishing to create a parklet would be able to start the paperwork process um as early as tomorrow. Alder Leek, I see you're back. The the resolution was adopted, or the ord- yeah, the ordinance amendment was adopted. So those who are interested in uh getting city spots, public parking spots, um, should contact the city clerk's office or their community development director's office. Tomorrow, you can start that paperwork, even though it won't take effect until Saturday. Uh, let's see. Item number twenty-three is on page ninety-nine of your packet, and that is a resolution adopting Portage County's All-Hazard Mitigation Plan. It was a four-hundred-plus-page document. Uh, we sent a link. Uh, it's available for anybody who wants to see it, but the county has done a a pretty good job as to in putting into a very detailed plan, um, how we would handle hazard mitigation. They requested that we approve this through resolution. President Johnson, you have the floor.
Well, having written to or helped write two hazard mitigation plans, one for Sheboyden County, one for Marathon County, um, I looked at this and I would like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Alder Jennings. Discussion? Seeing no discussion, I will ask the clerk clerk to please call the roll.
Jennings?
Aye.
Sure.
Aye.
Zarazua?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slawinski?
Aye.
Nibone?
Aye.
Leek?
Aye.
Dalton?
Aye.
Fishler?
Aye.
Marl?
Aye.
Okay, by unanimous consent, that is adopted. Our agenda is exhausted. Thank you all very much for um staying with us through this evening. Director Kramer, thanks for wearing your helmet. And we are adjourned at ten oh five.